Do we have all our people on the phone, Janie?
I'm on.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Donna, Debbie's gonna be on the phone.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I'll mute myself.
And I don't see Commissioner Jabor yet. There he is. Is the county clerk there today, too?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, with that, I've got 10 o'clock. And again, I'm not gonna do a moment of silence. We're just gonna go right into this meeting. Okay, this is the joint meeting. Today is the 24th of January. It's 10 o'clock, actually, 10:01. This is the joint meeting of the Knight County Board of County Commissioners, the Knight County Board of Highway Commissioners, the Knight County Licensing Liquor Board, the Knight County Board of Health, and also the governing body for the town of Perump, and the governing bodies of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabs, Manhattan, and the Board of Trustees for the Perump Pool District. So with that, Mr. Belondo, Commissioner Belondo, would you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go with the general public comment. This is up to three minutes, minutes, time limit per person. Actions will not be taken on this matter considered during this period of time until specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Dan Weeks, W E E K S, General Manager of the Knight County Water District Governing Board. I'd just like to say that my appearance here is personal, not directed by the board, although I do have the blessing of the chairman. I would just like to bring to the attention of the board that on the 21st of June, the Water District Governing Board brought to light the bill that is outstanding. It's $136,000 that is due to the Nevada Division of Water Resources. I'd like to tell this body that the Water District is engaged daily with the Nevada Division of Water Resources, dealing with problems and dealing with customers and dealing with county business as well as Water District business. From my position, the paying of this bill is vital to me being effective as your manager and moving forward as an execute as your manager. I ask that this body direct staff to pay the $136,000 that has been extracted as taxation from the community within Basin 162 for the administration, express direct administration and representation by the Division of Water Resources. So this is a taxation and representation situation. I ask that we move past the politics and the posturing and allow me to move forward as your manager. I assure you that I will compel the Division of Water Resources to come before you and explain the use of this money, just as I have explained and prayed to them that you will pay this bill so that I can be effective. I will pray to them that they come before you and explain the uses of this money. I know that they will do so, and my communications with the Division would lead me to believe that they are receptive. I'd also, I have a short period of time. I'd also like you guys to consider the fact that while legislatively, these fees are dictated by the legislature and the Division of Water Resources has no latitude in choosing whether or not they will be set per parcel, I can tell you that with through discussion with Division of Water Resources, we can impose basin-specific fees that will be purveyor-specific and create revenue within the district or within the basin that will then ultimately lower the burden upon the per parcel fee. So if you will pay this bill to Division of Water Resources and allow me to move forward and execute as your manager, I will bring before this board measures that will bring down that burden on your taxpayers and make it specific to the water purveyors. I know there's no room for questions, but after the meeting, I am completely available to any of you if you have any further questions about the administration of these funds. I've done tons of research on how they're using this money and why they're using it and why they need it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? On the phone?
No chair.
Thank you. Unclosed general public comment. Managers, managers, commissioners and managers comment. This is an item limited to announcements, topics, and issues proposed for future agendas and workshops. Commissioners, I know you're all on the phone, so I'm gonna pick one. Commissioner Cox.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment on what Mr. Weeks just said. If it ends up that we have to pay that amount of money, that I recommend that we take it out of the Water District's funds that have been set available to the side. Under the $5 fee that we've been charging the taxpayers forever, I think they have way over $300,000 in that account right now.
Oh, Commissioners, if I might.
Stand it on.
I would limit Commissioners' comments to avoid possibly discussing future action. That's all.
It's just a recommendation. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jabor?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you. I'm good at this time.
Mr. Belondo.
Thank you, Chairman. Two Supreme Court landmark decisions. The overture of, the overturning of Roe v. Wade and the justification out of the, in New York, in the state of New York, to get a concealed weapons license permit. You have to justify to the government the need, which is not a constitutional requirement. So two huge landmark cases, you know, swinging, we're batting for the people. So, thank you.
Commissioner Strickland?
I don't have anything since I can barely talk.
Ah, yeah, you need to take care of that. I don't particularly have any other comments either, so thank you very much. So I wanna move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody else in the audience, you guys? Oh, for Chris Saunders? Yeah, I'm sorry. There is one thing. Chris Saunders is having a celebration of life today. It's over at the Bob Root Center, and it's between 6:00 and 10:00. So if anybody wants to contribute, he's a veteran who has passed away just recently. Thank you. Thank you. Approval agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Today, we'd ask that you remove the following items from your agenda. On page number one, item five, and on page number two, items 10 through 15. So again, item number five on page one and items 10 through 15 on page number two. Mr. Chair, we had talked earlier about relocating some items, but we don't need to do that anymore.
We don't? We're good to go. Well, we could still do it if you wish to do it. Okay, all right. So with that, item number six.
Item number six, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion, and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Knight County Resolution Number 2022-28, a resolution to augment and amend the 2021-2022 budget of Knight County, State of Nevada. 10220, room tax, $65,000. 10254, building fund, $520,000.
Good morning, Commissioners. Included in your backup is a resolution and the budget detail schedules for both of these funds. The purpose of the augment for the room tax fund is we received revenues in excess of what we budgeted. The budget was conservative because this is a tax generated on hotel rooms being rented. We do have to pay 70% of that to the state pursuant to statute. So what this resolution for augment does is increases the revenue and also increases that expenditure that's tied to the revenue, so we don't have a budget issue.
Chair, motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt, and I'm gonna go ahead and second.
Jabor, second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jabor, 'cause if not, I'm gonna be breaking some rules, so. I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any public comment? On the phone?
No chair.
I'm gonna close public comment. Can I call for the question?
Belondo's aye.
Jabor's aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox says aye.
Aye.
Okay. To me, that sounds like Carboni's five.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Item number seven.
Item number seven, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Presentation, discussion, and deliberation regarding the renewal proposal of Knight County from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, with a maintenance deductible in the amount of $50,000 and a premium in the amount of $2,41,171.62.
Oh, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jared Rossi, for the record, with LP Insurance Services, here to present your options this year for your renewal for Knight County. Good to go.
Well, we got some questions here.
I would love to answer any questions before we jump into it, if we can.
We are going up in the world here. I mean, it looks like we're going pretty extensive.
Yes. Okay.
I don't know, Savannah, do we, do we think that we can do a better job if we self-insured?
So, actually, Chair, Lorena has far more information on this than I do. She's been spearheading this project since our risk manager resigned. And if Lorena is available to talk about the work that she did on this, I would appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Savannah. Mr. Chair, we have been directed by the board last year to look into going into self-insured. So we've been working with Jared and his team, and in the backup, there are comparisons. So it's not an action item to take regarding self-insured, but whether or not you approve the pool renewal will then give us direction on how to move forward. And we do have Jared there. He was speaking earlier to, if you have questions regarding the comparisons in order to help make your decision regarding the pool renewal, I would defer that to Jared.
So I guess the question is, if in fact we don't agree with what we've got here in front of us, and we don't agree with this, then we should move forward with doing self-insured? Do we need to do something now and then later do self-insured? Or can we just say no here and then give direction?
You can, you do not have to approve the renewal, and that will then, we will move forward with the direction given by the board last year to proceed with the carriers that have provided their quotes for self-insured.
So I guess I have to hear from the rest of the Commissioners. I'm gonna start out with Commissioner Cox.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
It's possible that we have Alan Calt, excuse me, with pool on the phone. And if he is there, Mr. Calt, if you please press star nine, I can unmute you so you can address the board and questions. He is unmuted.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, did you hear my comments?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Commissioner Cox, what do you, what's your opinion here? What do you, what?
Well, I'm real not sure at this moment. If somebody could give, you know, explain the figures that we have a little bit better. I'm all for self-insurance. I don't have a problem with that. We may have a couple of lawsuits coming up in the future that are gonna be pretty expensive. I don't know whether Pool PAC would be covering those or not, since they've come in up, well, well, since we've already had. In fact, I don't know if they've been filed, but since we've already, that's something that's falling under our time we've been with Pool PAC. Is there some way that we could hold this off for maybe another meeting coming up soon? Or are we right on a deadline right now?
Well, the deadline is either you go with what's on the agenda or not. So that's what we're, what we'll be talking about.
Okay.
You want me to go to another Commissioner or?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
I was talking to Sam about this previously, as far as any claims that would not have been tendered. And so anytime you do switch carriers on any coverage that would be claims made, we would then aggregate any claims before the actual effective date, turn in any notice of loss, whether we have knowledge or not. But we wanna make sure that notice goes into the TPA before we complete the transition on 7/1. So Sam and I would get together, make sure that everything that we have knowledge of is submitted before we leave the pool effective 7/1.
Great. That should answer one of your, that should answer your question, Donna.
Okay, okay. So you're gonna be through on 7/1 of this year?
7/1 is the effective date, so the current coverage would terminate that day, and the succeeding coverage would take effect that day as well.
Okay, so we only have a few days left, actually. What, less than a week?
That's correct.
To, the only thing listed. Okay. I'd kinda like to hear what some of the other Commissioners think in the meantime, while I'm deciding here.
Okay, Commissioner Strickland?
I'm just wondering, Chair, if we could open item eight so we can discuss that also. I'd like to make a proposal, please.
Okay, 'cause you wanna include the town. Can we, should we wanna do, can we do that? Do we have a problem with that?
Marla's on standby. I think in the past, we've discussed both items together.
Why don't we just?
Marla can correct me. Brad Richardson, Knight County DA's office, by the way.
Okay, so.
She on the line?
Let's go, let's see, we'll make a risk here. Open, it's open on the rate as well.
We've done it in the past. I'm just checking to see if Marla's on board.
Hi, hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good morning. Yes, I would advise to just read number eight clearly for those that are listening, such as myself, and they can be taken together and just be very specific in discussion, whether you're talking about the County of Knight policy or the Town of Perump policy. So yes, clearly read number eight. You can combine them and discuss and decide together.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So item number seven remains open, and along with that, we'll open item number eight, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Presentation, discussion, deliberation regarding the renewal proposal for the Town of Perump from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, with a maintenance deductible in the amount of $2,000 and a premium in the amount of $152,874.18.
Thank you, Chair. Strickland here, what I'm wondering is if the board would consider self-insuring for item number eight, which is the Town of Perump, and see how we perform, given us time to look at whether or not we do a well job of that before we take on such a large, maintenance deductibles are huge for item seven. So that's my thought process, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jabor?
Mr. Chair. That's Lorena.
There you are.
I just wanna make a comment regarding the Perump policy, and I might need Jared to chime in, but it didn't make sense to go self-insured for the Perump policy because it's minimal and they have a very low claims experience. So we were, our recommendation was to continue with pool for the Town of Perump policy.
That is correct. The premium for the Town of Perump is rather quite low. By comparison, the retentions would be above where the current premium is. The deductible for the town also is quite low as well right now. Didn't make sense to take on a deductible 20 or 40 times the size to qualify as self-insured at this point for the cost savings was not as substantial as it was for Knight.
I appreciate that. The discussion is still on the table. So Commissioner Jabor?
I.
I don't believe, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Strickland has finished.
Commissioner Strickland, you have more?
Yes, if that's the case, Chair, then can we please review the backup in regards to item number seven and the performance of this particular insurance premium summary and total cost of program, which by the way, does not have page numbers on it. It'll be the last page of your backup. All right, so given our caps, given our cap liabilities, how would our insurance carrier currently say that we are performing with this particular policy? Is my question.
The current insurance carrier, at the loss ratio that you currently have, obviously, their response was roughly an increase from the premium of 1.2 million last year to this 2,41,000 this year. The response from the open market between Liberty and Berkeley, the two primary carriers, at approaching the self-insured level, Liberty and Berkeley brought you in at a total premium, or not to exceed premium, I'm sorry, of 1,297,503, meaning that as they continue to refine their quotes, that is the absolute cap on premium that they will, they will not exceed that. However, the actual premium may deliver below that number as well. The total cost of program below, use the table from the previous page, where we used the ground-up claims, the total incurred amount, that's the reserves and the paid amounts from 2012 to 2021. We've capped those in three different scenarios. One at all 50,000 for pool to provide the, what their result would be. And then we kept the property claims at 50,000 as well, and that would be the program under Liberty. 250,000 for liability for the program under Berkeley, resulting in the amounts, moving back to the total cost of program. We have combined those with the premiums. As far as the three scenarios, the best, the average year, and the worst year scenarios. Under pool, the best year scenario, paying out all claims under the total incurred, including the premium, would bring you to a premium of 2,233,589. With Liberty and Berkeley, it'd be 1,565,234. For an average year of claims, pool would have you at 2,479,954, where Liberty and Berkeley would have you at 1,896,036. Your worst year of claims from 2012 to 2022, or to present date, would put pool at 2,657,994, with Liberty and Berkeley at 2,168,398.
Thank you. No further questions from me, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jabor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not in, as you know, I'm not in favor of self-insuring. Insurance is a huge risk, risk factor for any company, any business, and we're talking about employees, many employees in the county. If we look at the amount of claims over the past 10 years, it's significant. And of course, that's reflective of why our premiums have gone up. I think that once we get through this or these items and figure this out, I think we also need to go back and we need to do a better job at training our employees, starting from the top. Because we've asked for a report to dissect the why. I believe we did request that from you, Jared, at one point. I've not received anything since. I don't know if you're still working on that report or not.
So, Commissioner Jabor? So we have received loss run reports for quite some time. One of the struggles with those is that they do contain confidential information. But one of the things we can do is try to redact those so that we have something for the board. And I know that pool and Jared are working on putting together a report that specifies, because the reports that we receive right now are quite cumbersome. And so we're looking at trying to make that report a little more legible so we can identify specific departments and specific claims that keep reoccurring so that we know how to target our responses to those.
I know, I've been asking for, since the meeting, so we can actually sit down with folks and get things resolved, so we can actually have better training or whatever we need to go do to make things happen. We need the details.
And that report is complete at this point. I will make sure that, I was of the understanding that it was here, and I apologize if it is not. I will make sure that that is here immediately.
Thank you. Commissioner Jabor, you have anything else?
Yes, I, you know, I wanna thank you for the explanation. But again, you know, there's a reason why we ask, we ask for things. If you have to redact, then redact. But I don't have that information in front of me to speak on it and to say, this is the why. So let's move forward, go, let's get those reports. I need those reports. And if you have to redact, again, redact. I'm not interested in the personal. But I do wanna know the why, and there's different areas, there are different departments that are, we'll say, violating. There's accidents, there's incidents, there's a lot of reasons. But if we can hone in and figure this out, and again, with better training, I think this will, this will help us in the long run. But again, this is a very risky, very risky business. Going, this company is willing to take us on from experience, from the actuaries. The underwriters are looking at everything. They pencil, they really, really focus and hone in on what's going on and what has happened, especially in the last 10 years, that what we can see here. So I appreciate you getting me that as soon as you're able, please. Thank you.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Thank you, Commissioner Jabor. Commissioner Belondo?
Thank you. Manager, question. You get these reports?
We do, yes.
You do. Could I ask you what, and you've looked at them, unredacted?
Unredacted, yes.
And what's the difference between you and us?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, what makes you so special? You can look at them unredacted. I mean, what point of, why are we here, then? If we're not looking at this information?
So there are certain things that management is privy to, that Board of County Commissioners is not, or things that I'm not even privy to, that HR is privy to. I don't see people's confidential medical files. I don't see, there's several things that I don't see even as manager that HR sees.
Okay, can understand that, but again, you heard the Commissioner talking about, he's not interested in the personal stuff. I mean, it just, it seems, it seems we have these roadblocks in the conversation, and it's not just a conversation that we're having here today with Jared because we're trying to get re-approved. I mean, this is a conversation that's been happening. We've been trying to have this conversation regarding information for a good while, I'd say for the last six months. 'Cause we had a meeting a couple of months ago with this information. We had a meeting prior to that, and we talked about it last year. I just don't understand what disconnect, because here we go. It'll just go into another black hole of, well, you know what, we have to work to get the information. I mean, we're just asking for stuff so we can make the best educated decision. I don't feel like we have all the relevant information in front of us. I know we had another insurance carrier, another gentleman that was looking to do stuff, help us with self-insurance. He was looking to give us just a different option. I think we're missing the big picture here. This board is trying to make the best fiscal decision in terms of insurance, in terms of what's good for the employees, what's good for the people here in the county. And I don't feel like we're getting it, so I don't know if we can, I don't know if I have everything I need to make a decision here today. I'm very frustrated with that.
The question is, is that when a decision's being made, when it first comes to us to be evaluated, we don't have the details that tell us, these are the real numbers. Maybe the aggregate number of whatever, but we don't get to see what made up that number when we ask the question. We don't have that information at the time we actually sit down and discuss it. But I appreciate that, you know, that you guys are trying to work it. And I understand we have to redact certain information because it's not privy for several of us to see. The thing is, is we have a problem. We are coming to the point where, come July 1, either we have to make a decision or we will be going self-insured because we won't have pool. So we need to make a decision. It's unfortunate, but we're at that point.
Commissioners, if I might, I just wanna question the Commissioners about taking
any action, whether or not to self-insure. It's not on the agenda. It may be relevant to discussion of the premium here, whether to approve paying this premium, but no action, no discussion regarding action on the issue of self-insure.
The only reason why I made the comment is because July 1, if in fact, we don't make a decision, we are at that point. That's the reason why I made that comment. Just to clarify.
This should have been on the agenda a while back. I think it's really cutting it close for us to do this, because I feel the same way everybody else, if I didn't have enough information, didn't even, you know, realize that we were going to go that direction, because that was not mentioned. When I spoke with the insurance gentleman a couple of weeks ago, we weren't really talking about self-insurance at that point. So I was kind of surprised by this. But what has prompted the policy to go up so high? What has happened that we don't know about that's caused the deductible and the policy to go up, I'd say close to a million dollars?
Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Cox, we did have a couple of meetings where we did discuss, and I'm not too sure if you made the phone call or not, but they did explain to a certain degree on what the issues were in regards why the premiums went up. If you want to clarify that, if you would.
It's purely off of the loss ratio over the last several years, the increased frequency of claims, the increased cost of claims. The loss ratio has extended over 100%. And so when pool went back and offered a renewal this year, the only option they were able to come up with was the $50,000 deductible. They were not able to vary off of that point, and that within the actuary that did generate a premium, again, up to that 2,41,172 number. But that is a lost, lost experience-driven increase primarily.
Is that based on claims? Is that based on claims? How many claims we've had this last year? Have we had an excessive amount of claims this year?
Correct. Not just this year, but the previous years as well.
So now, over what period of time?
They use, they use 10 years of claims within their actuary, and that was the presentation they gave as well, showing the 119% over the last 10 years. Moving closer to the five year, that loss ratio goes up quite a bit more.
Sometimes it's nice to hear the whole thing.
Exactly.
Is there one department that's specifically driven losses?
The last time we looked at your claims, as far as where they were coming from, as far as the type of claim, law enforcement liability was the large driver of that at this point.
Okay, so is it possible to self-insure and somehow make some of this come out of the sheriff's budget, since they're the ones that have obviously caused this to go this high?
That's, that's a pretty difficult answer, question to answer, so.
So can I, can I, may I take a crack at that one?
I was gonna say, how many deputies do you want to relieve? So, again, that's getting...
Commissioner, so I asked a very similar...
Excuse me, may I just recommend again, avoiding reaching any consensus on the issue of whether or not we would self-insure?
Well, in respect to either approving or not approving this, renewing this policy, hearing how many times law enforcement seems to be at the top of this list of why our premium is so high, I'd have to ask myself the question, Commissioner Cox, what budget do you propose them to come out of? Because they come out of the general budget, because you'll make these comments here now when we're looking at renewing this policy. However, when their budget is before this board, I don't really hear very many comments. As a matter of fact, everybody just wants to say attaboy and good job. But, you know, the overtime and the accountability and that fiscal point, I mean, it should be a continual basis that we're looking at that stuff, not just when we have a boosted premium because of, you know, law enforcement claims history over the last 10 years. So just a little perspective and food for thought there. It's all the same budget, though. It's all out of the general fund. 10101.
Again, it's a 10-year, 10-year run, so that covers a lot of people who didn't say a lot of things. But this case here, we're still stuck with this, so I guess I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask for some public comment.
Can she finish her comment?
Go ahead, Donna.
Hey, one more thing. The problem is here, we've been paying school pass all these years, thinking that we're paying them in full each year, and now we're hearing that, no, we're basically being backcharged for years back, and now we're going to try to play catch-up this year with all the things that we thought we had already paid in the past. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I mean, just...
It's a, it's a ratio, Donna. It's based on 10 years. This is, the increases have been going up over the 10, over 10 years. It's not where they're going back and saying, oh, we're gonna try to catch up money that we lost. It's, you know, we're here at this point in time that we can't, we can't suffer any longer as far as the insurance company's concerned, because their losses are major. You want to try to explain that a little bit?
Absolutely. The increase in premium is from an actuarial study, although they analyzed 10 years of claims. What they're doing is they're looking at the frequency and the severity of the claims and where they're trending. So what the carriers attempted to do, the carriers attempted to charge enough premium that the limits would be, would stay intact for any claims they anticipate for this year. The premiums paid over the last, over the last years were intended to do the exact thing in that term. They charge a certain amount of premium based on the history for where they think the claims will go in that 12-month period. What they're looking at here is they're saying that the claims over the last few years have outpaced the amount that had been paid out, and that's why they have to increase it, because if that trend continues, they will need continually more premium to pay those claims.
That's basically what I was saying.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't operate a business at a loss on a constant basis, and that's basically what they're telling you.
You know, run through a couple of years, because there's a few years where the county did very well. You guys paid, and the premium was significantly lower. Could you highlight it? Just run, maybe run through it and just show us, show some of those numbers?
Where the premiums have been and where the claims have been? Actually, I'm gonna defer to Alan on that. I know he has the information in front of him. I have the capped claims that we used for the study. Alan, can you give us an idea on the incurred claims and the premiums associated with them?
But he needs to share the townhouse. Mr. Call, you need to share the townhouse story first, though.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Commissioners, Board. Alan Call for the record, the Pool Pack Chief Financial Officer. So the numbers that I want to walk through, I'm looking at claims data as of May 9, May 9, 2020, okay, or excuse me, 2022. So if we look at the current fiscal year, the total incurred claims as of May 9 are 1,872,000. Your net pool premium of, you know, what you, what you paid pool, less the agent commission, so what went into the bucket of money that the pool had to operate was 1.1 million. So for every hundred dollars of incurred claims, the pool was paying out 159.70. And that's without any operating costs. But that's for the current fiscal year that's going to end in a week, through May 9. If we look at 2021, the total incurred claims is 1.6 million. The net revenue that you paid to the pool was 817,000. So for every hundred dollars you paid the pool, you've had incurred claims of 195.90. So both those numbers are in, well in excess of 100%, where the pool's average is 69%. So 69 dollars versus your 159, your 195. For fiscal year 1920, your ratio is 76%. So, so it's better. It's under 100. It's not at 69, but you're paying 76 dollars for every hundred dollars you paid in. Your total incurred claims equal that. If we go to fiscal year 19, it's 153.60. If we look at fiscal year 18, it's 73.01. If you look at the year before that, it's 119.30, then 95.80, 141.60. So you look back at those two, four, six, eight, those eight years, you're well in excess of what you paid in. The pool has paid out, has incurred costs of, the incurred claims exceed the premium paid. We're a member-owned organization. We're owned by the cities, the counties, the school districts, the special districts. So in order to pay the Nye County claims, we end up having to use, you know, money that is in the, you know, in the pool that's been paid for by other members who have had a better loss experience. And as Jared Rossi has pointed out, the actuary looks at the last, the 10 years and the last five years. Unfortunately, the data does not look good. You have frequency and severity issues on your claims. That's why it drove the premiums up from, you know, the 1.1 million to 2 million, whatever, the 2,41,000 is because of your claims data, where you've been subsidized, where other entities have been paying your claims, because your premium hasn't been high enough, and you've been above the 69.70% of what is estimated to be paid out in claims cost. So that's a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I have one. If we're doing a 10-year period, and we've been paying in several years that we haven't had hardly any claims, versus, how much, how much have we paid your company in the last 10 years versus how much you've put out in claims?
So, so I have 11, I have 11 years' worth of data, and you paid us 7.5 million. You paid us, in round numbers, you paid 7.5 million. The pool has incurred costs of 8.8 million. So about a million three is what the pool has, what the, your total incurred claims cost has exceeded the net pool premium of what you paid in, you know, at the 7.5 million versus the 8.8 million on an 11-year period from fiscal year 2012 to 2022, based on data as of May 9, 2022. So that ratio is 117.20 is what's been incurred for claim costs, based on what you paid.
Now, when you say claims costs, are you referring strictly to the claims from Nye County? Because I know you have many members in this organization, and I know that whenever anybody has a claim, it comes out of the pool and you increase everybody's. For instance, we had a claim from one of the other counties at one point. There was an 8 million payout, and it caused our deductibles to go up in Nye County and all the other counties based on that claim in one county, because it came out of the PAC, the pool, so it came out of all our pockets. So we got an increase, even though it was a claim from a different county. So how, how much, when you say we have all these claims, are you including other people's claims also, all the claims, or just Nye County claims? Just something that went to somebody from an accident or something we had in Nye County?
That 8.8 million of total incurred claims are Nye County only. Nye County only claims, total incurred. It's only your claims, not the town of Perump, not the, you know, not Beatty, not, you know, not Churchill County, Lyon County, Elko County School District, none, none of those. These are just Nye County claims, the claims data that is provided to your agent, provided to your entities on a quarterly basis. These are only your claims, not anyone else's. So that 8.8 million is Nye County, and what you paid in was, what was paid net to the pool of 7.5 million is what Nye County paid, not what Lyon County or the, or Nye County School District. That's only what you paid.
Okay. Let me put it this way, then. Out of all those claims, can you give us a specific list of where all those claims came from and what they were for? You know, was it the Sheriff's Department? Was it for a car accident? Was it for a worker getting injured on a public works project? Was it, I mean, we don't know what we can correct if we don't know what we, what has actually happened.
Commissioner Cox?
So, anything in front of you?
No, Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Cox? The, that was, that was some of the questions that was asked earlier, because we've been asking this since we've had our meetings, our separate meetings, that we said we needed to have this particular data. They are, they say they have it now. We have, we haven't seen it yet, but they say they have it. That'll, that'll help us to do corrective action in the future. It's not going to help us today. So what I'm trying to get to is what are we going to do now, now that we've had this conversation, and we've heard from basically all the Commissioners? You've heard my, my put in the very beginning. So we need to, we need to make a decision. Again, July 1 is coming, and it's either recovered or we're not.
Do we know what self-insured, the policies, do we know what they've offered us for self-insurance? I mean, are we, you know, I don't know what we have here as far as what it would cost us to self-insure.
We can't get into that because it's not, we can't get into that because it's not part of the agenda.
Yeah, so how do you make a decision?
Well, let me try to clarify a little bit. A year ago, when we had the same juncture, we talked about self-insure. Okay, it took a year. I mean, people in the county have been putting together their data that says what they can and what they can't do, and what it's gonna, what they believe it's gonna cost us. So we've not put that on an agenda anywhere to ask that question. So that's, that's our problem.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, but it is in our backup. It's the second to last page. It shows Liberty Berkeley versus pool.
Yes, I got that. But again, we should, each of us who read this information should have already had that in their possession.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, please.
Commissioner Jabor?
Thank you. My question is for Jared and the CFO, Alan. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, sir. My question is, looking, looking at the historical data of the past 10 years that you've provided, looking at the premiums versus the paid out claims, do you think, do you think that our claims will be less next year, according to the historical data?
Commissioner Jabor, again, for the record, Jared Rossi with LP Insurance. Looking at the trend of the last 10 years, the trend would point to you have an increasing frequency of claims, and with that, there is a bit of an increase in severity, but there is definitely an increase in frequency, especially within the last five to six years. Again, looking at, that's looking at historical data. I can't tell you what's going to happen in the next year, but looking at the last 10 years, I would say the trend grows as we continue.
Yes, and if we, thank you, and if we were able to lessen the claims, is it possible that our premiums would, would actually go down, as it has according to the past 10-year numbers?
Typically, a control on claims would, would translate to at least some sort of reduction in premium. Premium is generated not just off losses, but off the amount of exposure you have. For liability, that would be payroll, how many offices are on the street, how many EMTs, professionals, from, from the property side, your total insured value as you, as you acquire more buildings and you grow as a county, that... that will also continue to increase. And you've had, you've had years where we've increased property values by double digits as far as the percentage. So will that outpace the claims? Possibly not. The, the claims right now are really the real driver of the premium within pool. However, under, under a different circumstance, like a self-insured circumstance, that would be more within your authority. So the, the claims kind of sit a little bit further outside. You're generating more off of the, off of the exposure and not so much off of the claims.
Okay, thank you.
You have one?
Mr. Rossi, real quick. So I was looking through here and one of the items says agent compensation. Would that be your commission rate?
LP Insurance, yes.
Okay. And I believe traditionally it's been nine percent?
Seven percent.
Seven?
Yes.
Do you have like a specific number and then you kind of adjust the percentage to just keep at that number?
No, pool pays a given percentage, which was seven percent, just under seven percent. And they disclose that. This year, we, we decided to do that completely separate, cap it at a, a lower number than last year and stay with that regardless of which direction you went.
But that doesn't, that's not 2 million and change. And then the, you take the percentage out of the 2 million and change, correct?
No, no, we, we set up a separate agreement with, with a separate compensation plan. That way that we would only be looking at the premiums here and there wouldn't be any adjustable commissions for given percentages. We set it at a flat fee.
Let me restate my question. Is your compensation in, above and beyond the 2,41,000? Or is it included in the 2 million?
If you stay with pool, we, yes, it would be above and beyond because we, we requested the, the cost be net of commission to, to discuss the, the premiums. That way there would be no, no sliding scale for any kind of commission. Other carriers offer differing commissions. We dropped all the commissions. Instead, we're going to stay at one given number regardless of which.
When do we find out, find out the total cost of our, of our premium? Because your rate, you said, is less than seven.
Yes.
I, I don't know if, that might be something confidential that you're just not trying to put out there into the universe?
We, we combined both Perump, Nye, and the work comp and set the, the final fee at 100,000 for everything. Which was about 30,000 lower than last year after everything was set in.
So the policy in actuality is 2.141 million, shared with?
Perump and then as well off of the, the work comp, so.
Okay, so the percentages will break down as long as it's 100,000, that's all. Okay, I understand what you're doing. I get it. Okay. Well, that's, that's good to know there, too. That makes sense. Well, I just, I mean, they got to be asked. I used to think that their commission came out of it. So I used to reduce the number. Well, when I was made aware of that, I needed to ask, make sure that was inaccurate.
I've not, I've not ever seen it ever come out of, out of that, that number. It's always been something above.
I thought we just got final numbers saying, here you go, here's the bill. When you go to Mickey D's, you pay one number. You don't break it down saying, you know, one thing or another, so.
And Mr. Chair, may I?
Mr. Jabor.
Thank, thank you. I just want to help clarify a little with Commissioner Blundo and thank you for bringing that up because customarily it is taken out of the, the premium and up to the seven percent. And it's actually commendable that this company and Jared has worked with us because if you do the math, they have given us a considerable discount in regards to the commission, to Jared, the agent, and the company for the work that they do for us.
I concur.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, commissioners, we've all had this discussion about this. It's almost, I think it's time for us to make some kind of a decision here. So it's either, it's either we, we move or we don't. So I'm going to ask somebody if they have a motion for at least item number seven, which is the county, Nye County. I'm not hearing anything, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve as, as written, number seven.
Okay, I have a motion.
Okay.
And I have a second. Is there any public comment to this medany? I have somebody coming down, just in case somebody wants to know. And then when we vote, I'm going to have to have by name.
Roll call vote.
Thank you, John Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G, for the record. Commissioner Jabor, thank you for that motion. I think it's the only way to go. I think if you guys self-insure, looking at the numbers, I mean, the numbers I heard, 2021, 1.6 they paid out. 2022, 1.8 they paid out. It went up 200 grand. And they're asking for 2 million this year. So if your losses continue that trend, they're going to pay out 2 million bucks. So you would have paid it out if you self-insured versus giving them 2 million bucks now and let them worry about it. And we don't know what the future is going to bring. Commissioner Cox talks about some other county paying an 8 million dollar one. If you got hit by that, you're done. So that's what these guys are here for, the big ones. So as far as I'm concerned, that's the only way to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Koenig. Any other public comment on the phone?
Yes, Chair.
Thanks, Sam.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. And you can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. All right, so my comment is, I don't understand why the county is involved even with these public swimming pools. They have plenty of competitors out there who would be very happy to come out here and build a swimming complex or some.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Pool Pack is an insurance company. It's not a company that builds pools. So we're actually talking about the insurance for the county, not, not, not a pool.
Well, okay. So I, I understand the liability insurance and I just feel that 100,000 dollars a year is awfully high for the limited time that the pool is open and.
Mary?
So anyway.
Mary. Ms. Fisher, so.
Yes.
Let me just pause your time for just a brief moment. Pool is an insurance company. Pool stands for the pooling of all the rural counties coming together to insure and, and we pay through that. That, that's where pool, the term pool comes from, and it's Pool Pack.
Oh.
So it has nothing to do with actual swimming pools, spas, jacuzzis, or anything of that nature. So now with that information, you, you need to speak to the, to the agenda item, okay? I'm going to restart your time.
Okay, so I apologize. I, I need to do some more research, but I, I pray that you commissioners do the right thing, whichever it turns out to be. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Appreciate it. Anybody else on the phone?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Sherri Stringer, Nye County Assessor, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R. I don't think you guys have any other choice than to go with pool at this time. I think if we had a catastrophic accident, we would bankrupt the county if we went self-insured. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. All right, commissioners, I got a motion and a second. I guess I asked for public comment, I'm closing public comment. I'm going to call for the question. You have a question?
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
I do. One more, one more question, yeah.
Hang on, before I go for the question, Commissioner Blundo has a question.
Yeah, I don't want to stop everyone. I don't want to do it right in the middle of the vote. I think that's, yeah. Mr. Rossi, I just, I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm personally on the fence. I just wanted to give you one final shot, go one way or the other on this thing because I, I hear what we're saying on one side. We, we need the coverage. I agree, we need coverage, period. That's a blanket statement, okay? I mean, we're working, we don't have certain reports. One of my colleagues needs this information. I think we all should have this information, redacted, unredacted. Don't worry about that. I'm just saying, we don't have that information in front of us. I don't want to put our people in a position with no coverage. At the same time, I understand you guys are a business, just like any other business. Claims go up, premiums go up. But I, I just, I wanted to give you one final shot to go one way or the other or, and Mr. Colt, one, one final opportunity. I'm just, I'm listening.
As far as a comparison between the, the two options, whether to renew with pool or do something else, pool is providing you a, a contained cost in that they have a lower deductible. So as far as a frequency of claims, that's going to generate, you know, less back to you. More of it's paid upfront, obviously. The option of self-insuring is more of a risk. It is, we're going to take on much lower costs at the beginning and build back into a program that, again, we try to arrive at, at the total, total cost of program, looking at where have you been historically, where have those claims come in? And how much have you paid out? How much actually has the carrier paid out? Because we're looking at total incurred, not just what your deductible was, but what would your deductible be under any given scenario. So again, the three scenarios we gave you is your best year of claims, an average year of claims, and the worst year of claims. What we do there is we cap those at the, at the retentions that they've given us. So under a self-insured model, your, your retention is 250,000 instead of 50,000. So it'll increase each claim by 200 that would be paid out. That's what we consider in here when we, when we put together this, this total cost of program. We've already capped those at those given limits. We've already merged that data in with the premiums to attempt to, in, in looking at the historic data. This is where we think you would be under these three different scenarios, looking at your claims data from the last ten years. Again, looking at what pool's giving you, they're not only saying we've paid this, they're looking from an actuarial standpoint saying, I'm looking at the frequency. This is where you're going. And because we cover you at such a lower level, we have to charge these premiums to pay for the outstanding claims and where we think your claims are going to grow to. So as far as the, the real difference between the two, you are, you, you would, you would finance less on the self-insured side because you're not bringing that deductible down as much and you're taking more of that authority on within. When you take more authority on, you can do more in-house as well, though. So you don't have to turn things into a deductible. You can work them through your district attorney's office. You can repair things through Public Works. You can adjust, you can, you can repair your own vehicles. Where under a deductible program, the true intention of that is to submit every claim. They're looking at every claim that comes in and they handle each claim that comes in and they will either charge you a deductible or they'll, they'll use a voucher program to work it that way. But they're looking at it from a first dollar level and charging you back on the deductible. Self-insure retention is you have all the authority all the way up until then. So you can handle it whichever way you need to and you can notice that the TPA when it's appropriate. Most of the time, we see a reduction in the, in the submitted claims under a self-insured program as we do a deductible because you are required to, to report them under a deductible. Under a self-insured program, more of it becomes an in-house item where buildings are fixed by Public Works or by contractors contracted directly or certain liability items as far as maybe a, a simple car accident might be handled out of the DA rather than from a TPA, giving you kind of an idea of the difference of the program and the difference of authority between the two. Self-insure does not mean that we're going to cover the entire 20 million dollar building ourselves. We still have to buy insurance for that. We're just taking a higher deductible. And once it crosses a certain line, it's called self-insurance because you're able to do it before you have to turn it in.
It's that, that, the, there's an insurance level, the one you were just talking about, the high-risk, right?
The high deductible versus self-insurance?
Yeah, there's a name for it. Catastrophic, thank you.
Catastrophic, yeah. And, and we use the, the term self-insure retention. And, and yes, and for each, for each entity, that catastrophic level could be quite a bit more. Some will run a million dollar catastrophic level. That would be their, their stop on their loss. That's their self-insure retention. That is a, a high level to go to when you first start. So 100 to 250 to 500 would be somewhere where they start. And again, this one is capped at 250 because that's where the carriers have come in at.
I guess a relevant follow-up now, manager. This one goes, I think, to us in terms of not renewing any representation because right now we have pool attorneys. They, they farm, they farm a lot of things out for us and we have variety of cases where they have a pool attorney that's taking care of that situation in tandem with the DA's office. So what would happen there?
So I asked the same question in speaking with Jared as well. Each, each insurance provider has their own pool of attorneys and a lot of the attorneys that are used are the same ones because they have multiple contracts with different insurance companies.
Understand.
That accurate, Jared.
Yes. But what would happen if, if we chose not to renew, what would happen with us?
It would go through our attorneys.
It would just go through our attorneys?
If we chose not to renew with pool. Right. If we chose, chose not to renew with pool, as Lorena stated, we would execute the self-insurance option, go with the providers that are listed under that policy and then take advantage of the pool attorneys, or sorry, the panel council for those individual insurance companies, which again, may be some of the same attorneys we're dealing with currently, but no guarantee.
But also, underneath self-insured, it also puts us back into some of our own attorneys here in the county. We don't always have to go outside as part of the self-insurance. It's a mixed bag. But again.
I'd like to ask the other question when you're obviously talking.
Hang on one second, Donna. Would put you in a situation where do we have the, the staff and the people in the DA's office and all those things that we would need to make that all happen? That's the other question we don't have. And again, it gets, starts pushing us to, you know, we're going to start talking about self-insured. So I mean, we need to make a decision based on some of the comments we had here and, you know, it's, we need to either move forward with the pool or we, we table this or what? I think you have one more question. Donna, go. Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Cox, go ahead.
Yeah, um, okay, so how much does pool pay out? What's your limit on each accident or each person involved in an accident? Say for instance, you have one accident, but you have three people, maybe, maybe one of them died. How much are you going to pay out on that? You have a limit on that, right?
The, the per incident limit with pool is 10 million with a 10 million dollar aggregate. That is the, the program that pool offers.
Okay, so what happens then if, for instance, they get a 50 million dollar judgment against us? Are we responsible for anything between the 10 million and the 50 million?
As far as with, with pool, that, that can vary depending on how that's handed down. Alan, would you like to respond on anything that's gone above your limits? Because I have not been part of that.
You know, I'm not in a position to, to, to answer that question. That would be a, a coverage counsel determination and Wayne Carlson would be a better person to, to answer that question. And I don't know, but I do believe Wayne might be on the phone. But to speculate on cases, but I think if I understood, the question is, is what happens if there is a judgment of 50,000 dollars and the pool has a limit of 10,000? What happens to that 40,000?
I'm talking millions. I'm talking about a severe accident, you know, caused by one of our people, for instance, the Sheriff's Department. If they had an accident and accidentally had an accident and, and killed somebody in another car and that person goes to court and gets a 25 million dollar judgment and your limit would only pay 10 million dollars? Does that mean that we don't have to pay anything above what we're insured for? Or does that mean we're stuck paying the extra 15 million out of our pocket anyway? Because you have a 10 million dollar limit on each claim, right?
Correct, there's a 10 million dollar limit on each claim with a 10 million dollar aggregate.
And what's the aggregate?
Aggregate means that's the, that's the most they will pay in any one policy period is 10 million.
So that's all you pay per year?
Annually, yes. That's, that's how much they'll pay.
Okay, so I'm just going to make one quick statement here. If we're going to, if we do self-insurance and we have to do this through our own attorneys, et cetera, if we don't go with pool, we'll have 2 million dollars to start that procedure with. And it's kind of a chance to take, but it's a heck of a good start to have that much money to, preferably if we're going to do it through the DA's office, to actually hire. money to, preferably, if we're going to do it through the DA's office, to actually hire staff member through the DA's, or deputy DA, or however you want to put that, to actually do this for us directly, because we always put time through these things through the DA's office anyway. DA's office is always involved in everything. So, I think that that's a good start. That's just my take on it. But to me, we got to, it makes sense that if we're going to start somewhere, why start, why throw away $2 million this year and then start next year and have to come up with another $2 million if we already basically have that much banked by the time we pay this out?
Okay.
Because, I, I know the other, there are a lot of other counties that are self-insured, and were self-insured when they had very small populations. Park County's one of them, and that's why they're not in the pool, and they've, they've done fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That's my comment.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I know this has been long, I know people would need to take a quick break. I'm going to take a five-minute break before we do a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
May I clarify one item that's in the backup real quick? Just, as far as, it's more of a semantics item, but if I can, can I make one further comment to clear that up? Yeah, it is. It pertains to this, but it's more a high-level item. So, I know that we're tossing around the word self-insurance and self-insure retention and deductible. However, if you look at, within the, the backup, the, the backup shows that if you, if you change the wording of self-insured to deductible, you're not moving to a fully self-insured program if you don't renew it with pool. You're moving to a $250,000 deductible for liability and retaining a $50,000 deductible for property. So, that, that's the structure of the program. That's what allows us to go in and render the data on the claims, because I have to have somewhere to, to set this, and we have to have something to ask the carrier. So, we ask for these specific items that, that now $250,000 qualifies as self-insure retention, which is why we use that name. But if we were swapping the word deductible, it's, in effect, it really functions the same way. Deductible means you turn it into the carrier and they pay first. Self-insure retention means you pay first, then the carrier gets involved. So, if you had a pop, if you had a huge claim, a $10 million claim, you're still in for the first 250. The rest of it is still covered by insurance. So, I just wanted to clarify that when we use self-insurance, that doesn't mean if you have a $10 million claim, you pay $10 million.
Right.
So, I want to make sure that we're not getting stuck on, on that item, that it is a semantics item.
Got that. I appreciate that. That's a good, good scenario.
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, please. Thank you, Assistant County Manager. Lorena would like to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just would like to clarify and address a few of the concerns that commissioners have brought up during this discussion. And first, I would like to apologize for the 11th hour agenda item. I did pick up where our former risk manager left off, and Jared has very, has had patience with me on getting these apps to him and then in turn to the carrier. So, that is the reason for this item being so late. But also, we want to, regardless of how this item moves forward, if we renew or not, we will be putting forward our corrective action plan that we were working on within our risk management policy. And we're, we're restructuring the reporting that we get in order to provide to the commissioners, so you can review these reports quarterly and bringing forward any department, office that is responsible for the claims before the board to provide a corrective action. So, regardless of how this moves forward, that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Director, Manager. Appreciate that input. And we're not upset with the being too late, but we wanted to make sure that everybody understands where we are. So, we have a motion on the table, and I have a second, okay? So, and we've had a lot of discussion deliberated on this thing quite a bit. So, I guess I'm going to start the vote. I'm going to be asking by name. Commissioner Jabor, see if you started it.
Jabor is aye.
Commissioner Strickland.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, what's your vote?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, I voted nay.
Commissioner Blondo.
Nay.
Commissioner Carbone is nay. So, a motion doesn't carry. Thank you. Let's move on to number eight.
Thank you.
Number eight, we have already opened this item. This is a pool, pool item as well. Again, this is a separate item from the other. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept is written.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a second.
Jabor, seconds.
Have any public comment on this one?
There's no comment on the phone, Chair.
So, understanding, if, based on the, based on the motion, we will keep this in pool. Colt? All right. No public comment?
No.
Public comment on the phone?
I'm on mute.
Do I want any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, yes, I just like to make a comment. I, I, I know, I don't, I just don't feel splitting this up. If we're going to go through all the trouble of investing into self-funding, I think we should just have a full packet and put the town in there with it, since we have to insure a town separately for some reason from Nye County, because it should just lay out, it shouldn't cost us anything to do that, basically, because it's going to fit right in. I think we'd save money in the long run, even the short run.
Thank you, Commissioner. Assistant Manager, what, what's your take on that?
We, we do not, we're not recommending to go self-insured right now. The, the deductibles would be higher, and so the, the cost of the program staying with pool makes sense for Perump right now.
I seem to agree with that. So, I have a motion and a second. I've had requests for public comment, have no public comment. Any other Commissioner comments?
I agree with Commissioner Cox. You do for both? There's no claims, there's no claims here. It doesn't, it doesn't get the same. It's, everything is Nye County, and I don't see the difference.
That's another, that's another $152,000 towards setting up our own insurance program.
It doesn't really work that way, but...
Well, you can make it work that way.
No, you can't, because the, the town and the county are separate as far as funds are concerned.
Correct.
So, you can't mix and match two different colors of money, if you will.
It's just that we would have the basics and still have two separate policies, but we would, you know, we'd already be set up for it. So, we just have two separate policies, just like we do now.
Commissioners, if I might.
Dramatic, dramatic.
Yes.
I'm getting it all done over with.
Mr. DA, go ahead.
Just recommend we are on item eight now with regard to Town of Perump insurance.
Correct.
It may not have been clear to some of the listeners. Okay, thank you.
We are, we are talking about the Town of Perump. All right.
Well, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Lorena, do you have any other comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
So, if we didn't go with pool, you're going to have a problem?
May, may I? I'm not, I'm not, am I allowed to?
Hang on, Lorena, somebody, you might have somebody here helping you.
Am I, am I allowed to offer comment on this at this point?
Sure.
Okay. The, the current structure of the program for Town of Perump, it's a maintenance deductible of $2,000, generating $153,000, or, yeah, $153,000 in total annual premium. The, a, a self-insured program with one loss would outpace that by over $100,000, because, again, you'd have to go to the same type of program, $250,000 liability, deductible basic.
Basically, it doesn't pay at this point.
It's, it, the, any, any shock loss there would then outpace where we are currently with a $2,000 deductible plus the $152,000. It's, the, the premium, honestly, is, is probably too low to look at a, a self-insured structure for Town of Perump without exposures that would push it into there.
I can give you the simple answer on that one, it's because the Town of Perump basically got swallowed whole by the County of Nye.
Yep.
And, quite frankly, I'm, I'm just not happy with that. The Town of Perump, just like any other town, is its own entity, and, well, we seem to co-mingle the two more often than not, so...
And I, I understand that. I, I just want to provide information from the exposure and, and the amount of premium that's, that's out there right now. Moving that into that program would potentially be more costly than leaving it with pool at a $2,000 deductible, and knowing that there are claims, there's not a lot, and they're not severe, but if there was a severe claim, it would very much outpace the, the program cost we're at right now, creating a, a situation where we're, we're a significant amount over where we would be totally paid out.
Where Commissioner Blondo's coming from is if there was a elected town board, there probably would be more claims, because they wouldn't even be coming here to the county, they would go directly to the town board.
I understand that.
So, I mean, that's the reason why he made that comment. And it kind of, kind of lends itself to understand that, that separation. All right, well, we've had a lot of comments.
One more quick question, is what is the limit on this per accident, per year? You said the other way, $10 million once a year that you would pay out. How much did you pay out? What's your final limit on this one?
Town, Town of Perump with the pool program is, on the same program, it's $10 million per occurrence and $10 million aggregate per year.
And it's that much less in premium? I'm surprised. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cox, you shouldn't be, because the, the County of Nye, we're the purse strings, so, since we've gobbled up the Town of Perump, those, anything that would hit the, the Perump hits us, because there's no money over there. The money is us.
Yeah, well, they're only charging us $152,000 for that one with a $10 million.
Because it still has, it's, it's still its own entity, but, you know, if you're going to swing for the fence, you're not going to swing for the, you know, for first base, you're swinging for the home run. The home run is Nye County, we're the purse strings, we're the millions of dollars behind it. So, if there's a liability claim from, from the Town of Perump, we still get sued. We're always sued. Makes no difference.
Yeah, and I just wanted to put it, I just wanted to put it on record in case something would happen, and...
Understood.
I wanted to make sure they're going to put out the $10 million. Okay. I just wanted it on record, thank you.
Lorena, we prepared for that to happen? If we would do, do not go with pool?
No, we are not. And also, I would just like to point out that it's not just, you know, the elected town board members that were, that are absent, because there is none. There are parks that are liability to the town that could cause a claim, so I just want to make sure you keep that in mind as well, it's property too.
Mr. Chair, may I?
It's just not, not just the parks, it's the fairground. So, I mean, it's all part of the town. So, just, it's, it's a lot bigger than just, they're driving their trucks from buildings and grounds and so on and so forth, so it's, it's a lot larger than most people understand. But, again, you're right, it comes to us too, because if they're suing the town, they're suing the county at the same time. It really doesn't, doesn't really help that. Is there anybody on the phone for comment?
Mr. Chair.
There is, hang on one second, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
That was me. It's Deborah trying to get back on. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Jabor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shin, Jared, is, I don't see it in the backup, but are you able to give us any numbers on claims through Perump for the past five years? And more specifically, last year?
It is not included in the, it is not included in the pool presentation. However, Alan, I know does have that information in front of him. Alan, can you shed some light on the claims as well for Perump?
Did he fall off?
No, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
Quickly, to get that information, pulling up the spreadsheet, Town of Perump. So, the claims data, 2017, total incurred was $2,871. 2018 was $131,862. 2019 was $16,399. 2020 was $13,402. And 2021, $22,501. I do not have a lost run through the current year, so those are the, those numbers. Again, let me just say them in order, 2,800, 131,000, 16,000, 13,000, 22,000 for the last five years.
That's fairly, that's not even, it's very big, I mean, when you get down to insurance and claims or situations. All right.
So, how much are we paying for that? How much have we paid over the five years for the policies?
Commissioner, I don't have that information readily available to me. In 2021, it was $147,000. This year, it's projected at $163,000. And I would speculate that it's been in the, over, it's probably a $5,000 each of those years. I think our increases have usually been, you know, 5% plus or minus, you know, based on exposures.
Okay, so we've put out $10 million, close to $10 million for the policies, and we've only had claims for approximately half a million dollars. That's what I was looking at. So, we're in the hole. And we're in the hole on our end, because we've put out a whole lot more money than what we've had claims. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jabor.
Thank you. May, may I bring, bring to the attention that, that the claims, my claims question, and I appreciate the answer from Jared and Alan, however, please keep in mind that, that claims is not the only factor in what we're paying in regards to the premium when it comes to these policies.
So, again, we've had public comment. Do you have anybody else on the phone?
No, Chair.
Okay. All right, yes, I'm going to be, this is a tough, another tough one, I understand, and again, it's, it's one of those decisions that, you know, once we make it, it's, we have a direction we have to go. I'm, I want to make sure that everybody's on board, whichever way it goes. So, I'm going to start out with Commissioner Jabor. We have, we have...
Jabor is aye.
Where's John? Aye. Commissioner Cox?
Nay.
Commissioner Strickland?
Aye.
Commissioner...
Nay.
And I'm going to go with nay as well. And I'm gonna go with nye as well. So, thank you. We're gonna step in, we'll step in.
Yes.
All right. Let's hope the rest of this goes a lot easier. I know, hope, hopefully, nobody's really upset. Number nine, sir.
Item nine for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject town of Perump Resolution number 2022 dash zero two, a resolution to augment and amend the 2021 through 2022 budget of the town of Perump, state of Nevada, 25251. Fire impact fee, $294,130.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the phone?
No, Chair.
Tonapah?
Nobody in Tonapah this time to speak, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna close public comment. I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Arboni's aye?
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Jabor's aye.
Five, zero. Thank you.
Strickland's aye.
Oh, I thought I already heard you. But, okay, thank you. Number 18.
Item 18 for possible action, pursuant to NRS 293.387, one canvas of the returns of the primary election held on June 14th, 2022.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sam Merlino. Um, I'm sure you've, I, hopefully you've had time to check over the results. Uh, the first part of the document is all the summary. It's much easier to read than the statement of votes, which is very long document, but it does break everything down. There are a couple of things I would like to add that, of course, are not in the report, um, just informational purposes. Um, we had 89 ballots returned to us that need signature cures. We had 46 that were cured, and those votes were counted. We had six rejected ballots. Uh, three actually, three people actually voted and returned their sample ballots in their envelopes. Um, one envelope was returned with no ballot, and two envelopes contained two ballots. So, I'm assuming possibly a husband and wife put both their ballots in one envelope. So, in that case, both ballots rejected. So, total of six rejected. We actually had six individuals who voted twice. While they didn't vote twice, I should say they attempted to vote twice. Our system won't allow them to vote twice. Um, four turned in two sets of voted ballots. And what happens is the same day registration, they were sent their original ballots, and then they changed their party within the timelines. So, their first ballot was canceled in our system. They were sent a second ballot with their new party, and they turned both ballots back to us, but only one was counted. Um, and then we had two that actually voted early. We canceled their ballot, and then later we received their ballot voted in the mail. So, those, of course, will be turned over to the Secretary of State's office just for investigative purposes, but in most of these instances, it's just a case of not understanding the way it works, and so I'm sure that'll be the case in these, but there were six. On another note, same-day registration, we had 53 same-day registrations. There were new registrations during the early voting time period and Election Day. We had 161 registration updates. The majority of those were all a change of party because possibly they were independents or nonpartisans and did, the majority changed to Republican, and that was during early voting or Election Day. So, that was 161. That way, they could vote in our closed primary for the candidates they wished to vote for. Also, as you're all aware, we had that issue, um, of precincts 17 and 22, where when we redistricted, we had five households that were not moved into the correct precinct during redistricting, which was caught, but unfortunately, we had five individuals who did vote in the incorrect precinct. Um, like I said, there were five households, 11 voters, but only five voted out of those 11. It did not affect any other race or any race at all.
So, we're saying those didn't count, right?
Well, no, they, they voted in the wrong precinct. They counted, but they received a ballot for their old precinct, not the new precinct they should have been moved into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so, the same thing happened on, from precinct 29 to precinct 19 because we had two different spillings of Lorelei. So, there were 10 households that did not get moved, but there was only, there were four votes. Um, one Republican and three Democrats voted in the incorrect precinct, but they've all been taken care of and moved into the correct precinct. So, none of those would have effect, um, affected any of the ballots or races.
But their vote counted, correct?
They, their votes counted, absolutely. Just because you get a wrong ballot styled and you voted, it still counts. It just, they were missing each, I think, um, and the one was in Commissioner Strickland's, um...
District.
District. Yes. So, they, they did not vote in that race because they were in their old precinct. So, they missed, they didn't get moved over to the correct precinct and district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, other than that, uh, see, I told you rejected. Sign, did I tell you about the signature cures? We had 89...
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask. You said 89 were rejected.
No, well, 89 needed signature cures, but 46 were cured, which they actually sent back an ID with information that it was them that voted about it. In a lot, in a lot of these cases, a husband signs or another family member signs the wrong envelope, and so we're bound, even though we know it was probably the husband or wife, we were bound to send them information and ask them to correct that. So, but 46 were cured. Um, and I think that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
What about the remainder of the 89?
Those, those are rejected. If the signatures do not match, or there is no signature, and quite a few of those are no signature on the envelope, we cannot accept them.
It did, is, so, okay, I got it. And that wasn't because they were in the wrong place or anything like that then, okay?
Yeah.
Um... So, okay. Anybody have any questions?
I, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jabor.
Thank you. I, I'm just curious, um, Madam Clerk, and it's really, well, every vote counts, right?
Right.
So, I, I'd just like to ask because I'm really curious about the, um, the two ballots in one envelope. Um, so is it procedural to reject both ballots when an envelope comes in name-specific? And to take the name-specific ballot that was included with the two and to count that vote and reject the one that was inappropriately placed in that envelope?
For one thing, you can't identify the ballot, so we don't know who it belonged to, either one. So, the envelope is the only identifier. So, when they enclose two ballots, we can't determine which ballot that voter voted. And I, I believe it's in the administrative code, and I'm, I'm not sure it's in the statute, but it, it is state law literally to reject if they do, if they tried, you know, it's like voting twice almost. They have two ballots enclosed in an envelope, so there's no way to determine which one belonged.
Thank you. And what hit me was, I know when I take my little stub off, there's a, there's like a little serial number that's attached to, that identifies me specifically. I didn't realize that was not also on the ballot.
Right. It's, it's a secrecy issue. So, when our ballot board separates the envelope from the ballot, there's no way we can tell who voted that ballot.
Okay.
It's Nevada law, secrecy.
Thank you.
One more question for you. So, how many, how many voters that were previously classified as inactive actually voted? I mean, just trying to see if the, how the voter rolls changed.
You know, I don't have the answer to that because we usually, um, rectify that and run those reports after we do the vote history and everything else. So, we haven't gotten to that point yet where we've been able to pull the inactives to determine how many there were. But I, I will tell you that we had, even after all of our cleanup and redistricting and everything else, we still had over 1,000 ballots returned undeliverable because people just move, and not much we can do about it.
So, 1,000 ballots, right?
Yes.
So, you're gonna be looking at that to see what the reason for those were, right?
Um, it's just, they're no longer at that address. And so, what we do with those, um, undeliverables is we, after the election, everything is cleared, then we send notices to those addresses, and we start the process of canceling them in our system.
Because they could be deceased.
Or getting updated address.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. Any, any Commissioners got questions?
Yes, I have one more thing to say, uh, Mr. Chair, if nobody has anything.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank, thank, thank you. I, and I know there's a little bit of a lag, so I apologize. I just want to thank Madam Clerk and her staff here in Tonapah and in Perump. I know that it was a arduous task as it normally is, and it's not over, uh, but thank you very much for everything you and your staff did for this, uh, primary.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And that's another comment that I have, is that my staff worked a lot of long hours. Our ballot counting board, our election workers, they did an excellent job. We had a lot of new workers. Um, and like I said, my staff put in a lot of hours. So, they did an excellent job, and I want to thank them.
We also thank everybody for the amount of hours that they had to put in as well. Yes.
Nye, um, uh, Strickland here. Um, there was, I need to make sure you realize that, um, Sam Merlino and her staff stood up so well when there was a discrepancy that was found and worked so nicely with Joe Podolski, who was representing the Republican Party and making any reports that, of discrepancies at the time. And they handled themselves so well. And I know that Joe Podolski had already stated that, but I want to make sure that we heard that again because it was tough to have a redistricting and then, um, this election right on top of that. So, thank you, Sam.
I, I do have a comment.
Thank you.
It's, it's the folks that nobody ever sees that they're doing work, the folks that had to set those machines up every day. I want to thank them for all the time they did. That was mainly buildings and grounds who actually had to do all that work to set those machines up for Sam Merlino and her gang. So, I want to thank them.
Yes, thanks, Frank, for adding that because they, they were, I had every one of them helping me, and it was great. I appreciate that.
Very much so. So, with that, any other comments from the Commissioner Cox? Do you have anything?
Yes, I may have. Um, this is for Sam. Uh, Joey Gilbert says he's going to protest his portion of the election. Is, is that going to affect us any, um, where we maybe won't be able to certify the election until the protest is heard, or can we go ahead and do what we need to do?
This is Sam again. By law, our, um, we have to canvass today by Nevada law. Now, he has a certain time period to, you know, file a, uh, contest or to file for a recount. And it depends on what he does. A recount would be a statewide recount, which would affect all counties. Um, a contest, I don't know if he would do a separate court challenge for each county or single. I don't know enough about it. I have heard there could be a challenge or a contest, so.
That's usually, that's usually conducted in court is usually where the rule comes from that. So, it doesn't really affect, it doesn't affect what you've got here.
That, that is correct. It won't affect our results whatsoever. We do have to canvass today, and then, um, it depends on what the challenge is or the recount or anything else that could affect something later.
Right. Okay, so, with that, Commissioner Blundo, you have something?
I do. Um, just a few things. I, I want to talk about the undervote briefly. Can you talk about undervotes?
Yes, I meant to mention that. You know, it's not necessary that I include that, but I always have. And what it is, is in each contest, a voter can choose just not to vote for anyone, and that's what that undervote is. So, in a specific race, you see an undervote. That means that voter chose not to vote for any candidate in that race.
So, here's the real...
And it's mostly informational. I, I've always included it just so everyone knows what that's for.
So, then, why doesn't that add up when I, when I do the math, the people that voted, I just did my race specifically, the people who voted in my race minus the election wide, and it just, that 46 doesn't play into it. Shouldn't it be the undervote?
I, I don't know. I'd have to, there, well, there, there's also such a thing as an overvote, which is not included in an undervote, which we had a lot of overvotes.
It's an overvote.
Which means they voted for twice, which throws out the whole contest.
So, voted more than one time.
So, it's not considered an undervote, but is not considered a vote for a candidate. Believe me, we get a lot of overvotes as well.
Why would we get an overvote? Somebody mails in their ballot and then votes in person?
No. An overvote is when they actually select more than one candidate.
You can't do that.
That's why it's thrown out.
So, that would be a mail ballot speci...
They can't, they can't do it on the machines, but on a mail ballot, people do select more than one person for an office, and it throws the whole contest out.
So, that would be an undervote because then they did not vote in that one, isn't that?
No, no, it does, that's not the way it works. It's considered an overvote. It's not considered an undervote. An undervote is when they absolutely leave it all blank. An overvote is when they vote more than who they should vote for.
What do we do with the rest of these?
May I ask a quick question, Commissioner Blundo? May, may I ask a quick question in regards to the overvote, please?
Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk. So, so, if somebody was to vote for more than one candidate in, in a particular race on the ballot, is the entire ballot thrown out or just that particular candidate, candidacy race for that subject?
Just that particular race.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
What do we do with the ballots that are still floating around out in the universe?
The election is over, so we, we still, i- it's pretty common to receive ballots that are voted after the fact. What they're done is they're, we just date stamp them, and we seal them up with everything else, um, because they're too late to do anything with. They're just received late.
So, it's anything past the four days is what you're telling us?
That's correct.
What about ballots that were just never mailed but are just out in the universe?
Because that's the count of total ballots that you received.
Then I'm assuming the people that receive those ballots destroy them. I, I have no control over, once they've been mailed a ballot, if it doesn't come back undeliverable or they don't turn it in, voted, we don't have any control over it. But, but the fact is, is we can't accept any ballots at this point.
Right, but that would, wouldn't that help you with some of your decision-making on, on people that are, addresses are changed or something to that, that maybe we send something to somebody?
Not necessarily because the, we do pay for those to be returned if they're undeliverable. And that's what I was saying, we received over 1,000 undeliverable. The others, um, well, there, there are a lot that, um, people either surrendered at the polls or they signed the affirmation that they weren't surrendering it. So, there's a lot of those outstanding, and I do encourage people to look at that, uh, mail ballot form, preference form, to opt out. We had a lot of people that did not want a mail ballot but showed up to vote in person, and I think they're just not aware that there is that option out there that they don't have to receive a mail ballot. And I encourage anyone who wants to vote in person to get that form turned into our office before the general election. And then we won't have any ballots floating around out there.
So, my next question before you turn the mic off is how many people voted in person?
Uh, I think it's right there. Let me, let me check.
I might have missed it somewhere.
It's right there on the summary, um, it say, but it's separated by party. It'll tell you non-partisans who voted on Election Day or early voting, and then those that voted by mail. It's right...
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, that gives you a breakdown. Yeah, that gives you a breakdown.
Okay, quite a bit. We're going to hope more, but-
In person, though, correct?
Yeah, in person.
In person, yes. Well, actually, it says at the bottom, right there. So we had 2,220 on Election Day, 2,439 early voting, and mail 7,700, or 7,791.
Kind of a big difference between the two. Kind of strange, but I guess a lot of people like to do mail-in stuff.
Yeah, I, I will-
It surprises me. Oh, sorry. We normally have a huge turnout for early voting, and it was actually a poor turnout for early voting.
Yeah. I see that. I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, I, I'll tell you this. This, this election, I think, just extrapolates the challenges with this mail balloting. We want, I, I, I know we all believe, every, every vote counts. We need to, I, I always stress and express, every vote counts. It's your civil duty, exercise it, go vote, right? It's not the issue. But basically, you have like a month-long process of voting, where now you can, you're mailing, you're not mailing, you're coming in person, I haven't figured it out, we're voting, we're not voting, we're coming, I mean, it's just this, this process that is grueling, painful, and quite frankly, unnecessary. I, and now, given, and, and I think it was understandable, everybody had the concerns back in 2020, COVID, right? Sure, the mulligan, throw that one out, because I had concerns there, too. But now you're just getting all this other information that just, I'm not happy with our, with our elections and the, and the process we're taking. And I understand that that is not because of what you have done, Clerk. That is state law, and it just shows you how screwy those guys are doing things, and it's having a detrimental effect to the rest of us during our elections.
And if I, if I may, Commissioner, the dual, in-person and mail is literally twice the work on the clerks and registrars, just, so I absolutely agree with you. It's a lot of work to put on both types of elections.
It's, this is not a good process. This is not a functioning process, in my opinion. It's a lot of redundancy that doesn't need to be redundant. You know, I don't know if people knew this, but like on Tuesday, on Election Day, you can tell your employer, the employer has to actually pay for you to be able to go vote. It's your duty. But a lot of folks don't realize that, you know? They have to allow you the opportunity to go vote. So you have Election Day, early voting, and now mail ballot, and it's just, how many more voting? Why don't we just have voting 24/7? You want to vote? I feel like voting. Somebody want to vote today? Let's vote. You want to vote?
Every day.
Every day you want to vote? No kidding. It's just, I don't understand this process where-
Vote by phone.
Vote by phone. There it is.
All righty, so, I had a lot of comments, we had a lot of discussion, a lot of input. Do we have anybody on the phone for public comment?
No, Chair.
Do we have any public comment in the audience? I'm seeing any, anybody, Tonopah? Nope?
No, Chair.
All right, I'm going to close public comment, and I am going to ask somebody to make a motion. If not.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve pursuant to NRS 293.387, the canvancy, canvassing of the returns of the primary election held on June 14th, 2022.
Second.
I have a second from a very sketchy voice. I love it. I feel like I've been-
But I'm here.
I've been there. All right, I got a motion and a second. I've done public comment, we've closed public comment. Forever hold your peace. I'm going to call for the question. Commissioner Jabor.
Jabor is I.
Commissioner Cox.
Aye, with a protest vote.
Okay. Commissioner Strickland?
Aye.
Commissioner Blundo?
Nay, that is a protest vote.
There you go.
Too many discrepancies, too many issues.
I agree.
And I also vote aye with a little bit of concern because of the process. All righty, thank you for that. So that's four, one. Thank you. We'll go back to 16.
Item 16 for possible action, discussion and deliberation for the Board of County Commissioners to extend the temporary appointment of Mark Comf to continue filling the vacancy of the Nye County Treasurer pursuant to NRS 245.180 to expire July 31st, 2022.
Most people, I hope they understand why we're doing this, is to help out the Treasurer's office, and also to have somebody to, once, once Rayland's back into the office, a little bit of coaching, a little bit more understanding, helping between the two, moving forward, things will get, give us a nicer report, and we'll have good things at the Treasurer's office. So I'm going to look for some public comment on this. Anybody? Phone?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, good afternoon, or, yes, this is Timbo Henon, D.O.H.A., N.N., O.N. I'm in favor of extending Mark Comf through, it'll help the continuity of his department and ease any distress of the upcoming building process happen July, August timeframe. So it's, it's a good thing to have, have him extended.
I do have a question. July 31st is a Sunday. We okay with that? It's actually Saturday. Sunday, yeah.
I was going to bring that up. We noticed that it was a Sunday as well, just conferred with the DA's office. It looks like we can amend that date to end August 2nd, I believe, is our meeting.
How can we amend it when we don't have anything to say amend? I don't want to get in any trouble, so you might want to call on your other partner, because we have been yelled at before.
I think we can amend.
Well, I think, I think we could amend, but Marla's probably on the line.
If I may interrupt, I don't have the number for the NRS, but there is an NRS that says, if anything falls on the, if a weekend or the holiday, then it is to be carried over to the next working day.
Oh, what's that called? I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Due to open meeting law, if it's, yeah.
And it's there, but I don't want, I want to hear it from our DA's, so, I don't want to, I don't want to hear anybody complain, so.
I, I think you can amend to, extend it to that next business day, so that we don't have a lapse.
If we're, can we push it back two days? So it's on Friday? Because if you push it, push it, it's in August, then. We're talking August instead of July.
You can't do that, if you have to move it forward.
Excuse me, can we, can we get Ms., can Marla, please, chime in on this?
I don't want to complicate things, but I don't want to get us in trouble.
Oh.
I don't want open meeting law coming this way.
I think you could look it up real quick on the computer there.
I agree with Commissioner Cox, she's correct.
Right. We, we, I think we, we all agree with the statement, that's not the issue. We just want to hear that from Marla, but, is she still on the line?
If not, we're going to have to go with Mr., with Brad, and we're going to go with what's said.
Mr. Chair? I think, I think you can move it to the next business day. You know, it'd be a fiction, or-
August 1.
Yeah. It'd be a fiction to do otherwise, to have it fall on a non-business day, on a Sunday. We'd, we'd have a gap.
So August 1 would be the motion.
Chair, County Manager, it looks like he wants to say something here.
Well, I was just going to suggest, I mean, our meeting is the following day, so that would give us the opportunity to take care of ending that one, or it would, it would end on its own terms, and then putting in somebody new for that, or extending if the Board so chose. But the, August 2 is our meeting.
That's a good point by my manager. That would give us the opportunity to have an agenda item that day.
Doesn't bother me. But right now, the point is, come the 24th, today, he is done. He has to leave the office. After today. So it's clear.
Hello?
Hello?
How did that happen?
Because we, we voted, we voted to keep him up until the 24th of this month.
And that falls on what day?
Today, today.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see it now.
All right. That's the reason why, I was just wanting to get, let's get something done, so we don't have to go through this.
Chair, I have a hand raise that might be Marla, if you'd like me to check it. The caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
It's Mark Comf.
So Mark, hang on a second.
No, that's kind of a paper.
Mark, hang on a second. Hang on a second. I don't know, I don't know if Marla tried to get on or not, so I'm going to go with what we've just said here today. The DA has said we can go out one day, so that's August 1. I need to know if there's going to be a motion for this. Because today is Mark's last day. Go ahead, Marla.
Yes, thank you very much. Marla Slocat, I would like to chime in, and the agenda item as written would allow you to take your motion until July 31, to extend the appointment until July 31. The, the agenda, the statute that the Commissioners are referring to, I don't see, see what statute that is and when it's applicable. You have committed to that date specifically. Anything deviating would could cause a violation of open meeting law, since Commissioner Strickland has stated that it's after July 1, 31, there will be an agenda, BLCC meeting, you can bring forth an agenda item, so it would extend till July 1, no different date. And if there's a vacancy, there'd be a vacancy after that, but you have an immediate meeting at the beginning of Jan., August. So I apologize, but you're committed to that date of July 31 for the agenda item.
Right. Again, it ends on a Sunday, and as far as I'm concerned, doesn't matter, but the point is, if we don't do something today, Mark Comf has to leave the office, because it's his last day based on our last vote that we made.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have a proposed solution. So if you went ahead and just passed the motion as is, and extended his term through July 31st, then we could have a motion, or, sorry, an item on the July 19th meeting.
That's fine, and I was going to make sure, we're going to say the same thing. I mean, we're on the same page, I appreciate that. So we just, we'll just modify, we'll do something on the next agenda, just to clarify. So what we have today is this item in front of us, so let's make a motion. If not. So-
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Thank you, motion to approve.
As written.
As written.
Thank you. I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any other public comment? Phone?
Yes. Yeah, it's Mark. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I think that you could handle any of the legal paperwork on Friday. I know that, that would be the revocation of my office, would be one legal document that would need to be handled. So, and that is the end of a pay period on the 31st, so it would, really wouldn't have a, an impact as long as we affect the revocation of my appointment, if we need to do that without another meeting on the 19th. Just a thought. But also, I'd like to thank the Commission for their confidence in me and the opportunity to do this. It's been interesting and it's been very rewarding. I think there is, you know, still some challenges ahead in the next couple of weeks to kind of wrap things up and have some way forward. If you, you know, the incoming Treasurer, it's their call as to how they want to handle it and deal with it, it's their responsibility ultimately. So I look forward to helping them in any way they choose to take it.
Very good.
And thank you for the opportunity forward.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Comf, appreciate your input. Okay, with that, I got a motion and a second.
I have a-
Chair?
I saw a public comment.
Hang on a second. Who's on the phone?
Oh, this is Brian Kunzi, K-U-N-Z-I.
Okay, thank you.
I did have some public comments I wanted to offer.
Go right ahead.
This is a private citizen.
Mr. Kunzi, could you please state and spell your name for the record?
I thought I did that, yes, Brian Kunzi, K-U-N-Z-I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I want to just say that, you know, I really want to commend Mark for actually willing to step up and take responsibility and step into the office and do what he, what he's done. However, I think at this stage of the game, I think continuing with an interim Treasurer is not in the best interest of the county. The one finality we do know is Rayland Powers is going to be our next Treasurer. And I think it's appropriate that we let Rayland step in and deal with the issues that are happening now, as even Mark indicated, things need to do, but it's ultimately going to be her responsibility to get this office going where it needs to go. And, and I think that waiting and just punting this down the, the field really doesn't help Rayland get this office in shape. And quite frankly, I think Rayland's been unfairly tarred by the failings of this past administration. And there's a lot of issues here, and all these comments about some type of an audit, and I, you know, probably really kind of run down a $12,000 rabbit hole trying to chase something. Doesn't change the fact that Rayland is going to be our Treasurer. And I just think that, you know, one of the things I've, I've been able to enjoy over the last several months is really sitting down and talking to Rayland, and I'm super impressed with her commitment, her willingness to ask questions, her knowledge of what's happening in the office. And I just think time is of the essence here, and I, I just don't understand what the desire is to get this office functioning. The office is going to function much better if we actually have the person who's been elected to do the job, to start the job now, and not wait another several weeks for her to do that. And again, it's just, it's not a reflection of Mark at all, because again, I think Mark has done a great job. I just think it's better to put the person that the people voted for into that office that she was elected to do, and, and I think Rayland is a great person, I think she's super qualified to do it, and I, I think it's just, I mean, quite frankly, I think they're not only handicapping this office, I think they're also handicapping the clerk's office from a standpoint of what's going to happen with the retirement that's coming up with Sam and taking over those responsibilities. So again, I just urge the Commissioners to really respect the vote of the people. They voted Rayland Powers our Treasurer. Please put her in as the Treasurer now and not wait another few weeks or several weeks to put her in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kunzi, appreciate your input. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, hi. Sherri Stringer, Nye County Assessor, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R. I cannot agree more with Mr. Kunzi's comments. I have to commend Mark for stepping up and, and stepping in as the Treasurer, but as you know, we are at the end of our tax year. We are beginning our new tax year starting July 1st. There are so many things that could go wrong with the, with not the right person in there that's qualified to do that. There are so many reports and procedures that have to be run, and I'm not saying that Mark can't do that, but what I'm saying is that Rayland has been through this procedure, and she is qualified to complete the tasks at hand. This could, well, I, I, in lack of better words, you know, we, we could put the county in an issue that we, we don't want to be in, you know? We, we have to get the tax bills out, we're mandated by NRS, and I don't want to see Mark fail, but I would recommend that you reinstate Rayland back into that office immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I got to ask a question, Ms. Stringer. How did you get into the line without going through the proper process? Because you just jumped right in. And the same thing with Brian, so we need, we need some communication. I don't know how these guys are getting a direct line.
Uh, hey, can I, can I, can I address that? This is Brian Kunzi again?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to let you address it right this minute. We need to talk offline.
No, no. I just wanted, okay.
Thank you.
Chair, all calls are muted.
Okay, thank you.
According to my manager, that includes Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Strickland, and DDA.
So I, I have no idea what's going on, so.
Yeah.
We need to get with the individuals so we know how we, how we got this situation. Is that, we, we gotta be able to keep some kind of decorum here.
Correct, so if Commissioner Strickland, Cox, and DDA Slowtek can hang up and call back in, um, using their appropriate codes, we can.
Correct.
Keep the line secure.
We having problems with the phones? Cause I'm hearing that, and I think that's the reason why it was buzzing so much, people wanted to get in to talk about the election and stuff, so I don't know.
I'm not, I don't show that there's an issue.
Okay.
Um, I just called in myself and was able to get through no issue, with no issue. Um, but how Stringer and Coonzie were able to speak without me unmuting them is, I, I don't, I can't explain that. However, I've remuted everybody, so I, just once again, um, Strickland, Cox, and Slowtek will need to call back in and use their organizer code.
Donna's online, right? Donna, you online?
Chair, could we do a roll call?
Hello?
Commissioner Cox, you're online, correct? Commissioner Cox? Can you hear us? Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Jabour?
Jabour's here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Can we just take a five?
Yeah, we're gonna have to take five. So.
Hello?
Thank you, Chair.
12:30. I'll give you a couple minutes.
That's what I say, I don't hear anything, I don't know what's going on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, but I, when as soon as Coonzie hung up, my line went dead.
Yeah, I had to go back in too, I don't know what's going on.
Cox and Strickland, can you hear me?
Your sound like you're coming down with them.
Oh, I've had something for a week.
Do you want me to start? Ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cox, are you online? Commissioner Strickland, are you online?
Uh huh.
I know Commissioner Jabour's online.
No, I'm up here in Twinapod, live.
You're online, yes. It's all phone. Anybody else? Commissioner Cox, are you back online yet? Okay, alright, even though they're, they're not talking. Um, I do have a motion on item number 16, which is to, to continue, to extend the temporary appointment of Mark Kumpf to continue filling the vaca- vacancy of the treasurer until July 31st. So I have a motion and I have a second.
Chair, I actually ha- I wanted to go into comment and then we went to public comment, so.
And I'm gonna close public comment.
Perfect, alright, if I may, just briefly, there were some, especially in the political election season, um, there were some comments that were made about myself and Mr. Kumpf, and I just wanted to spell any, any falsehoods on that. Mr. Kumpf has done a phenomenal job as, uh, the treasurer, he stepped in and he's done a great service here to the people here in Knight County, and I, and I think that shows itself. I would, um, I'm, I'm very embarrassed that certain individuals made very disparaging comments and, uh, they should be ashamed of themselves. You shouldn't be talking like that, so I just needed to put that, those two cents on the record. I think Mark has, uh, done, done everything he said he was gonna do, uh, in, in that, and that's evidence, because, uh, Ms. Rucker, our comptroller, um, she just gave me that look. So I know they've been working and, and moving things in the right direction, so that's a good thing. And I agree that there has been an election, however, um, just because we have this vacancy here right now, that doesn't mean we need to, uh, let's take this one step at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll make another roll call, Commissioner Cox, are you online? Okay. Well, gentlemen, it's us three for this moment, so, uh, I have a motion and I have a second from, I believe, Commissioner Strickland.
Go ahead.
So I am gonna call for the question. Garboni's eye.
Blundo's eye.
Jabour's eye.
I have two missing. Alright, item number 17.
Chair? There were comments, that, public comment, that I know you were getting the same messages, people wanted to speak on the election canvassing. Would it be appropriate to just reopen, just give it another shot for public comment there while we see if we can get the other two commissioners online?
Okay, we can give it a quick shot, if we wanna do that. Item numbers 18, can we reopen 18?
Uh, item 18 for possible action pursuant to NRS 293.3871, uh, canvas of the returns of the primary election held on June 14th, 2022.
This is for public comment, any public comment?
Commissioners, may I, um, interrupt? I, I'm getting reports from Michelle Nelson, Marla's Slowtek, that, uh, they can't hear anything.
Oh my God. Alright, thank you, and I know that these guys are gonna take care of that. So, it, that may mean the reason why we're not getting all the public comment.
Was that a finger?
As long as it's not.
Star nine, ladies and gentlemen on the phone. Okay, yes, no, sometimes?
Okay.
Okay.
So do we need to take another five, 10 minutes? A second actually.
Could we break for lunch then?
No, I'm getting, getting really think about that for.
We don't have anything.
One, two, three, four items.
Yeah, so the message here says, uh, the public on the call cannot hear anything.
So hang tight. Well, I'm gonna take care of Marla and Michelle, tell them to. If anybody's watching this on the TV, on the internet.
Hello?
There you go. Donna, are you there?
I hear you.
Yeah, I'm on.
Hey, but we, we're not getting our audience is part of the problem.
Um, when Coonzie hung up, my phone went dead. Immediately.
Okay.
I mean, it went, you know, I lost the connection immediately.
So hang, hang on a second, Donna, and, and, uh, Deborah, we're trying to figure out how to get the outside people back online.
Okay, it must have something to do with their connection, because it killed mine.
It, it's a, it's an issue that's local to us here, just everybody stand by.
Marla, also said when she could hear you talking, it was very, very low, you'd, you'd actually have to like lean into the mic before she could hear anything, when she did get some sound.
Oh wow.
They've now both hung up, they'll just wait on, on my message.
Yes, I will. Commissioner Cox? Are you online?
Yes.
Commissioner Strickland, you're online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have both commissioners online. Okay, just as people are getting back into the process, we reopened item number 16 for public comment, because it appeared that some people, folks couldn't come, call in. So we're looking for public comment on item 16, which is canvassing of the returns for the primary election. Excuse me, 18.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, that was number 18, thank you.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just said it, 18, correct, sorry. Well, I got somebody for public comment.
Since you asked for public comment, my name is Joe Burdzincki, B U R D Z I N S K I, and I just want to, uh, thank everyone that worked on the, uh, primary election here in Knight County, all the staff, people involved, the clerk's office, uh, for really doing a great job. The process that we have is not the best, there's problems that, uh, been caused from the state that we wanna clean up, I'm sure, but as far as, uh, Sam and the staff here in Knight County, I think, uh, they did a, a good job considering the problems that they had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else on the phone? Again, this is for item number 18, for the canvassing of the primary election, only.
Chair? The caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, this is Mary Fisher, um, F I S H E R. I just wanna say that, um, I was a poll observer, and I observed some discrepancies with the poll workers. I pointed it out to the deputy clerk, and, um, uh, she worked on it. Uh, it was regarding, um, one incident was regarding, or a couple incidents were regarding, uh, people taking photographs or running videos with their cellphones while in the poll booth. Um, the other, um, thing I also wanna add is, um, I went into, I had never received a mail-in ballot, and I never, uh, said I didn't wanna receive a mail ballot. And so, when I went to the polling place, at first they said, well, it's too late, you can't get one. Well then, um, but it wasn't, I still had another day or so. And so they went ahead and mailed me a ballot. So, the ballot that was mailed to me was for, I live in Perump, and the ballot was from, uh, Smoky Valley, uh, District 35, I believe, and I'm in District 33. So, um, there weren't that many different candidates, however, there were several, a few that were different. And then, when I went, I was going to mail it or drop it off at the polling place, but I had made an error, and so, um, and I didn't realize that the ballot I was looking at wasn't the correct ballot for my address. And so, I, um, ended up having to use the Dominion machine, and when I, um, uh, looked at the names on the Dominion, they were different than those candidates on the, uh, mail ballot, because I brought my mail ballot in as a template to use for, uh, my selections. So, um, I saw some names that I wasn't familiar with on the, um, uh, the Dominion machine. And then one other comment I just wanna make too is that when I was saving my, um, saving my, uh, ballot on the machine, the little circular icon that goes around in a circle, and it usually goes four, five days, it, it would be counterclockwise.
Mary?
That's all I have to say, yes.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate the comment.
Commissioners, may I interject? Are we on the item 18?
Yes.
Okay, we had a vote, I thought, I thought there was a vote.
And there was, there was issues with people could not get online for public comment, I got calls.
Okay.
As well as some other folks did, so we just wanted to clear up the, the public comment issue. We've already voted for it, I made that comment at the very beginning, we've already made a vote, this was only open for public comment.
Got it, thank you for that clarification.
Anybody else?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Melissa Blundo, B L U N D O. And I just wanted to make it, uh, on the record that I believe that the, uh, candidate who won in Commission District 4 is actually unable to actually take the seat based upon NRS 281.5587, considering that the member of his household is only two degrees of continuity away from him, since his, uh, significant other is the planning director, and it's only two degrees away, instead of three degrees away, since NRS 281.5587 says that you have to be three degrees away of continuity, um, from anyone in your household. Just wanted to make that clear and let the public know, since, um, they definitely did not let the public know that that's what was going on, and I believe the public was defrauded. And it is on, um, it is public record now from a deposition, and I was given advice from an attorney that I can let the public know from the deposition on record that, um, Brett Wagner and Ron Bakovich are still a domestic partnership couple, and, um, the public doesn't know it. So, wanted to make that clear, that if Mr. Bakovich does take the seat, uh, District 4 is not going to have representation. Anytime a planning issue comes before the board, he's going to have to recuse himself. And, um, anytime a public defender contract comes up and his daughter wants to have a contract, he's going to have to recuse himself as well, so we're going to have a lot of issues.
Excuse me, if I, if I may, I think maybe we're getting off the agenda item. I, I would just caution.
Thank you.
All I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment. Anybody else? On the phone?
No, Chair.
And I'm gonna close this public comment for this particular item, number 18. Again, it was only open for the public comment, it was already voted on.
Yep.
And that's already on the record. So.
Chair?
Yes?
For the record, I did talk to the manager about getting our newly electeds, start getting them up to speed by the end of the year, this way they're running when they get involved.
Correct, I heard that.
Tim, did you have something?
I did, uh, Mr. Chair, could you reopen?
I did. Mr. Chair, could you reopen item number 16? It's just for a point of clarification.
Okay, let's open item 16. For what reason, did you say?
Just for a point of clarification. So item 16 for possible.
For a point of clarification.
Yep.
Thank you.
For possible action discussion and deliberation for the Board of County Commissioners to extend the temporary appointment of Mark Komp to continue filling the vacancy of the Nye County Treasurer pursuant to NRS 245.180 to expire July 31, 2022. The reason why I ask that is during the discussion of this item, I received some correspondence that said that there had already been, there was already a gap considering that Mark, according to the minutes of the April 11 meeting, which was our emergency meeting that we held, stated that he would be treasurer until June 14, 2022. That was something that Commissioner Jabour also brought up in a different conversation. However, I believe the minutes are incorrect. The item itself states that the vacancy would be filled until a canvassing of the votes of the primary to be held on June 14. And so I just wanted to put that on the record in case anybody else had that concern. But I do believe that the minutes need to be corrected for April 11 because they state that he, it says the motion to appoint Mark Komp as the treasurer until June 14, 2022. So.
Fortunately, the candidacy is on the 24th.
Right.
Correct. Right. So there's no problem with that. There's just a discrepancy in the minutes, which is what I want to clarify.
So we need to make that amendment. So we need to make that comment to staff to go have that adjusted.
Yeah, we'll bring back amended minutes. Thank you.
We'll have to put it on the agenda and vote for it. Thank you.
And if I might clarify, that vote was 3-0 in favor.
3-0-2, 2 absent, right?
2 absent at the time.
Right.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, you guys were.
I'm here now.
Yeah, you guys are here now. Okay. I'm going to move to item number 19.
Did we vote on that? Did we just vote on Mark?
Commissioner Cox, we did.
Well, I was.
Commissioner Cox?
Yeah.
We did. We did because we didn't know if you guys were on or not.
Yeah, we're on. I mean, I didn't hear you say that you were taking the vote. I just heard you say you were letting the audience talk.
Well, we got kicks off. I mean, the whole entire system kicked everybody off, so.
It should come back up.
Since we're still on that item, Chair, could we just reopen that vote?
That's, I'm just going to say the same thing. Instead of having this argument, open item 16 so we can revote. We have a problem with that, DA?
No.
Thank you.
I don't think we closed it.
I don't think we closed it either.
I think we did. Oh.
No.
You're right.
16.
We didn't close it for, you know, for your clarification. Correct. So let's go ahead and we have a motion and we had a second. We kind of had a vote, but we had an issue with people not being available to vote. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Cox, what's your call?
Can you rephrase that, please, Chair? We were available to vote, but we weren't being heard because the system was down. So I don't want to hear that we're not doing our job.
No, you were doing your job. You just weren't available by via the phone was not operating.
May I just simplify this process? Commissioner Cox, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's an.
The motion was to approve, right?
The motion was to approve, yes.
Yes, motion was to approve as written.
I vote aye.
Fantastic. Commissioner Strickland?
Strickland?
Aye.
So the corrected vote is 5-0. My goodness, what a lousy day this has been.
Could I make a note on that really quick? We couldn't vote for the other person anyway because it's not on our agenda.
We know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you might have got it out there when I wasn't hearing you, but I wanted to make sure.
Item 17, can we get that one done?
Item 17, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve, amend and approve or reject two contracts for public defender services from the following list of applicants, none received.
Larina?
Larina, can you help us out here? It just appears that we don't have anybody who wants to apply.
Correct. We did not receive any applicants and we are currently re-advertising. And I have, I will place an item on the July 19 agenda. The deadline closes July 12 to receive applications. Arnold's put this out on social media, on the website. We'll have it in the newspapers. And the Department of Indigent Defense has also posted on their website. And I will reach out to any attorneys that have applied through their office. So hopefully we get more applicants.
I have a question here. I think there was a misconception because I was informed that we did have somebody that applied, but they went to DIDs.
And that very well could be. I did not receive that the instructions were to email me or send in their resumes. So there may have been that miscommunication. I've since removed that from the notice to apply through DIDs and contact me directly. And then I will ensure they've applied through DIDs as well.
Okay, so to be clear, I just want a very streamlined process. They're going to go through you and then you'll guide them where they need to go from there.
Correct.
Correct.
You need to be the point of contact on that. Period.
Yes.
Okay.
There was a kind of a hiccup there. I think we've got that cleared up now based on the way we're posting it. But it's kind of sad to know that we really don't have people who want to actually be, you know, lawyers for the indigent. I mean, we do have some issues and we have lots of cases. So this is just overloading the guys that are out there today constantly.
Chair, respectfully, I think you should hear the words that you just said, that question that you just asked, and ask yourself how many people that have come through and have gotten chewed up, spit out, and just rejected by this board and by some of the decisions this board has made.
I can't speak to that because I wasn't here to do that.
And I'll leave that one there.
But obviously we need to relook at whatever we got. I mean, if we have judges that are not happy with certain ones, we need to make sure we understand what those are too. We went through that once before when I was Commissioner the first time. So again, we'll have this back on the agenda in July, so let's move forward.
If I might, I think maybe you should permit public comment.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I do have a hand raised. I don't believe it's for this item, though. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
And this is for the item for approval of public defenders. If, based on, based on the item, we don't have any candidates. So just so you know, that's what the item is that you're looking at. So go ahead, commenter.
Hi, Mary Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. I just wanted to say that I concur with Strickland and Donna Cox.
Ms. Fisher?
We were on the line and we could not comment.
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Fisher? We're on item number 17. So we've already handled the phone issues. Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Item 19?
We are closing public comment on that item.
Yes, we did. Thank you. Item 19. This is a possible action discussion deliberation for issues, to issue a fireworks display event permit to the town of Amagosa to do the aerial display for their annual Fourth of July event being held Sunday, July 3. This event is being held at Amagosa Community Park. Amagosa Valley, Nevada applicant is Scott Harris.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve is written, please.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any public comment?
None on the phone, Chair.
I'll make a comment. You're lucky you're getting this permit because it was very late and you guys didn't file it on time. So if it wasn't for Commissioner Jabour and myself, you wouldn't have it. Just to let you know. I want that on the record. So with that, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to call for the question.
Public comment? We did public.
I just did public comment.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Gaboni's aye. Strickland?
Strickland's aye.
Gaboni's aye. It's 5-0. Thank you. Getting to the bottom again. Are you ready? Item number 20.
Item 20, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject a budget transfer of appropriations between functions within the Nye County General Fund 10101.
Commission members included in your backup is the schedules associated with the Nye County General Fund. What we're doing here is reallocating budget from contingency and one transfer out of the general fund to cover the needs of departments. I just wanted to summarize what the departments are and let you know what the overages were. None of these were at the, these weren't department failures. These were cost increases associated with doing business and I'll highlight each one of them. The HR department is an increase of services and supply budget for $10,000 due to collective bargaining attorneys' fees associated with the units that were opened and negotiated this year. The clerk's office is $25,000 in services and supplies for election costs, primarily postage that were far in excess of what we had anticipated. Buildings and grounds, utilities and fuel. Buildings and grounds operates the fleet department that runs fleet north and south between Tonopah and Perump, as well as all of their vehicles that they have on the road to maintain our facilities, as well as utilities on all of those facilities, generating that increase of 60,000 in services and supplies. Equipment, I'm sorry, 60.
That was 60 for B&amp;G?
Yes. Equipment services, which is where the general fund vehicles are maintained, that is a services and supplies increase of 65,000. That is partially due to, just, well, it's primarily due to overall costs rising. But we still have aging fleet. We're working towards replacing vehicles. But unfortunately, you know what's happening in the auto market right now. It's really hard to get our hands on new vehicles. So we're having to fix older vehicles instead of accessing them. Other judicial is seeing an increase of $10,000. That is related to conflict attorneys for indigent defense. We're seeing conflict attorney costs go up just due to the conflicts associated with those cases. NCSO is a total of 745,000. The majority of that is 487,000 for salaries. That's directly derived from the collective bargaining agreement that was agreed to after the budget was adopted last year.
485?
Yeah, it's 487,000 for salaries. And then services and supplies is 257,000. And that is for fuel, autopsies, and CCW fees. CCW applications are up, autopsies are up, and fuel is ridiculous, as we all know. Public Works is 12,000 in services and supplies, primarily for fuel, but also for vehicle maintenance. The shelter, we did have a small services and supply increase of $6,000 outside of the contract with Desert Haven. And that's associated with the items that are not included in capital for the new facility. And lastly, we have animal control for services and supplies, an increase of $5,000 for fuel. And that is because they do travel quite a bit in those vehicles. So in total, it's not an augment of revenues. We're not increasing revenues. We're just shifting the existing budget around from the contingency line item primarily and then a small transfer, a small reduction of transfer to compensated absences.
What was the total aggregate?
The total is, bear with me just one second. Almost there. Hang on just one second. And we did adjust in fiscal '23 for CPI. We increased fuel. We increased those other line items that are affected by overall costs going up. And we're, I mean, fuel has gone up well in excess of that CPI that we've built into fiscal '23. So we'll be having, likely be having a similar discussion unless fuel prices come down to a more normalized level. Does the board have any questions on this budget transfer within the general fund?
I can tell you that there's a lot of car travel. I mean, that includes us.
Absolutely.
We commissioners have trouble as well. Most of us use our own vehicles. I know I use mine as much as I can. And I'm using diesel fuel like crazy. It's not the most fun thing. It's approaching seven bucks a gallon, so. Any questions from the commissioners?
You know inflation's up when a Slim Jim's no longer 25 cents. Who's 59?
Absolutely.
Arizona's still 99 cents. What?
I'll find that out come the 6th of.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt. Do we have any public comment? On the phone?
None on the phone, Chair.
Anybody in Tonopah?
Nobody in Tonopah to speak at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I guess I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to call for the question.
Blundo's aye.
Gaboni's aye. Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Strickland?
Strickland's aye.
Okay, thank you. Jabour's aye. Thank you. 5-0. 21.
Item 21, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to, one, approve the FY '23 funding structure split for the Planning Department to support an unbudgeted senior code compliance officer position, resulting in no budget impact to General Fund 10101. And, two, approve an unbudgeted, approve an unbudgeted senior code compliance officer position within the Planning Department to be funded partially from Nye County General Fund 10101 and Building Fund 10254.
Commissioners, included in your backup is the position justification prepared by the Planning Department. And we do have Steve Osborne, Assistant Planning Director, as well as Mark Gangcar's Code Enforcement Officer available for questions related to department operations and needs. I can talk to the finance piece. I met with the Planning Director and discussed their operations and how their department interacts with the Building Fund. And the Building Fund, in a prior item during this meeting, we did augment with revenues well in excess of $2 million. The Building Fund is generated to manage and enforce the building code here in the county, excuse me, here in the town of Perump. And with that comes additional responsibility. So in discussing that with the Planning Director, if you look at the last page of your backup, I'll walk you through the financial summary of the positions as currently budgeted and then as I am presenting to you today. I'll give you a minute to get there. Okay, so what this summary shows us is the total position costs at the top for the position that's being requested. You can see salaries at $53,394, benefits of $31,618, giving us total payroll for this unbudgeted position of $85,012. Annual services and supplies are expected to be about $2,297, making the position request $87,309. In the next box below, you will see capital needs requested, and these are estimated. If this position is approved, the position would need a service vehicle, as it is code enforcement. Would need a PC docking station and other peripherals to be able to function in their position, as well as a desk, chair, and phone. In total, capital needs would be 55,000. So that's for the request. The next box down identifies the funding breakdown. On the left side, you will see the position titles. And in that first dark box, you'll see where it says current budget. And it shows the budget breakdown of General Fund 10101. The next column over is Fund 25268, which is the Town of Perump Business Licensing Fund. And that fund supports 50% of one of the code compliance officers. And then the third column, you'll see the total for the current budget. The general fund does absorb the primary bulk of these positions that are identified. And these positions are positions that work not only on general fund work, but also work on building fund work. So as proposed, which is the next dark block of detail on the right, to the right of the current budget, is the proposed budget. So we have a funding breakdown in general fund. And you can see the difference between the current and proposed budget to the general fund is no change. We've also not changed the funding, the portion of funding that goes to Town of Perump Business Licensing. It's still supporting a portion of it, but not all of it. We've reduced that impact down to 40% from 50%. The third column is Fund 10254, which is the Building Fund. And that fund would be absorbing the bulk of this difference. And then the final column is your total fund for the proposed budget. So if you compare the current and proposed budget, we're adding Fund 10254 for a total. we're adding fund 10254, uh, for a total salary and benefit expense of $97,417, and that's the offset for this positional request, um, to increase headcount in the planning department. So, um, essentially, it's increasing headcount while not putting that burden on the general fund and charging the building fund appropriately for services being rendered. And that's something in the comprehensive financial management policy, uh, that we've identified, that each fund that can share their proportional, um, overhead costs will absorb those costs. Uh, so this is, this is how we have structured this request. And I would, uh, I would like to ask the commissioners if they have any questions on the funding breakdown before we bring up the code, uh, code enforcement officer, as well as the assistant planning director.
Yeah. Commissioner Jabor, you have questions?
I don't have any questions at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Cox?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Strickland?
Uh, Savannah, well done, creative financing. Uh, that's what we need to see, because that fund, that building fund, is growing expecta, yeah. It's growing fast, thank you.
Thank you.
Londo?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I, I, I do agree with what Commissioner Strickland said. It is a different way of looking at it. However, I feel this is also, I thought the board spoke pretty clearly and people got upset. So you need the position, but now it needs to be a senior position. And I, I think the board spoke clearly in the past. So it's not like restructure it and turn it into, from one cake to another, just so we can get a slice of the cake. Or, I don't, those are just my comments at this time. I'm sure I'll have more after, but I want to give Mr. Osborne an opportunity to, uh, to speak. Hear what he has to say on this. Always a pleasure, Steve. How you doing?
Good. Steve Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. Last time when we were here with the budget item, it was a senior code compliance officer, so that didn't change. But, um, what we need this position for is we've got two code compliance officers that have, uh, about 300 cases, and, uh, those are mostly the property maintenance code cases, and that's, that takes up all their time. There, there's not a person to focus on marijuana facility compliance, um, air quality compliance, and, uh, Town of Perump Business License compliance. So what we want this position to do is to be able to focus on those things that don't really, we don't have somebody to, uh, dedicate time to do those things, so.
May I, Chair?
Go ahead.
So there was an item at some point in the past, believe it was especially through COVID. I think that's taught us one very important thing. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the marijuana establishments are still doing their thing. They have CCB that comes down and does compliance. Um, is it really, I don't see the necessity for you guys to go on top of them with the sheriff and anybody else. Just those comments there. Air quality, well, last time I checked, we're still in a desert. I get contractor complaints, people complain about that, but I don't think we're even able to respond fast enough, and I don't see where this is justifying. It's like, I, I, I'm just struggling to see that. What was the last one you had made, mentioned to?
Uh, business licenses.
Yeah. Why would the county be looking at Town of Perump stuff? Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. Um, well, we currently review all the business license applications because we have to make sure that, uh, the business is in a proper zoning district, and that's a county function, not a town function.
Correct.
So, um, the, uh, also, uh, the business license makes sure that they are in compliance with fire code, building codes, uh, planning zoning.
Do you have the fire department?
No.
Do they have a fire inspection that happens?
They do.
Okay. Uh, and shouldn't the fire department be doing that?
Uh, they, they would, they should, and they, that would be the fire department, yes.
It's a loaded question. You really don't want me to answer that one. They, they struggle with that, because if you pay the $50, you'll get your business license, but if you actually need the inspection, you gotta hound them. For example, liquor license, marijuana license, et cetera, et cetera. Because, you know, they're very busy over there as well. All I'm saying is, what I'm trying to show you is, I think you have pretty clear cut focus on the code compliance issues that are coming in. You have all these other things, and I don't know, do we need a separate item to say, "Don't do those things"? Or that's not your priority, or that's not your objective? And maybe that'll help alleviate that burden. Focus on the things that I think the board wants you to focus on, which are the code compliance issues. Mark and Amanda do a phenomenal job, and I know the department does a phenomenal job. We have those that come forward, they give good presentation when they do come forward. I mean, I've seen Mark driving out there, I've seen him, because I waved and honked back at him. So I, I know those issues are getting looked at, but I don't want to distract them with things that are unnecessary.
Well, just to clarify, so air quality and, uh, dust control, that is a county, uh, Nye County issue. Those are county codes that are handled by the planning department by code compliance. Uh, marijuana facilities also, they have a special use permit, which is handled through the planning department, code compliance, it would be the department that, uh,
If there's a complaint.
Would enforce the special use permit, uh, conditions and making sure that all the facilities are in compliance with the special use conditions that were put on that, a, as well as the other, uh, marijuana county codes. Uh, so these, these are, um, items that the planning department does and is required to enforce, so.
Right, but we're complaint-driven, and we have a, I have all these complaints over here. These are the ones that I think are the priority. These are the ones that should be getting addressed, which I think you are, right? So all these other little things, I, we have an issue with the dust and air quality control. Do we have a hotline, right? So you're asking me to justify another position. I'm saying, here's the way, and here's a different perspective. Air quality control, hey, where's the number? I should have been able to give that number to folks and say, "Hey, call here, we'll get somebody out there." And then that, that's on the same continuum, complaint-driven compliance, right? Because now there's an issue, construction site, it's specific, and, uh, then, then your guys can go out there and go do their job on that one, you know? But why are we spending these guys' times and resources? I'm trying to alleviate responsibility from their plate, from your plate. We got the SUP, they have, a, a facility has an SUP, whether it be marijuana or a brothel. They got it. I don't understand why you're going back there. You're citing compliance, but, I mean, they're complying. They're complying through various other departments. We'll hear about it one way, shape, fashion, or form. They gotta comply with the state. Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, it's an overbearance, an overbearing government, so. I'm, I'm open to hearing what my colleagues have to say on this.
Well, just to clarify, the reason why you are going back to these, there, there are a lot of places, just using that as the example, is are they adding anything to the properties that wasn't in the process where you were processing the SUP? And then come, come in front of the board of county commissioners and said, "That's your plan, this is what you should have on your property." Is that the reason why you're going to the marijuana facilities?
Right, we need, we need to follow up throughout the year to make sure they are still in compliance. We don't know unless we go out there and look at the facility. We don't know if their security cameras are still operating. We don't know if they haven't expanded or are doing something that's out of compliance with their special use permit. So we have to go back there and look at the facility and inspect it.
And with the SUPs that are out there, you have to do the similar things. Choose a brothel or the liquor license areas, which is a place that, and make sure that they're not doing something that's beyond their licenses, or that they've modified the facilities. I'm, I'm looking for you to be more, bring more of the reasons why you have to go do what you're doing. The reason why you're asking for this person is because you're asking, these are the things you gotta do, very specifically.
Yeah, the specific things that we're looking for when we go out and inspect these facilities. I mean, we're making sure that they, they're in compliance with the special use permit, all of the conditions that were put, there usually, there's about, I think there's 18, uh, mandatory conditions that are on a marijuana facility, plus there's usually four or five other special conditions. So we're making sure they're in compliance with all the conditions of the special use permit, plus any other, any of the other county codes that apply. There's a whole section, as you know, on marijuana facilities.
You have special conditions when you approve something, that you have to go validate to make sure they're following up on those specific, particular things that have been approved as far as the requirements in the...
Right.
Process, so, you know, there is, and we make those calls here when Commissioner, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, Commissioner Londo always asks the question, "Do you follow, are you agreement with the special conditions or the conditions of this, this activity?" So are those the things that you have to go out and ma, make sure are being followed?
Yes. And also, if I could add, there's also fees that are due, monthly fees, uh, renewal fees. We're making sure that they're paying their fees when they're due and following up if they haven't. So that's another aspect of the marijuana facilities.
Same thing with conditional use permits? I mean, you have the same conditions there, other than the special use?
Right, you know, there's lots of other conditional use permits out there. Um, there's a whole list of, we, we've got probably 100 businesses that have a conditional use permit, uh, separate from marijuana facilities.
All I'm trying to extrapolate here is that they have priorities. We have things that need to be addressed. I just want to keep them focused on the things that are important, not, hey, oh, it's, I gotta do it quarterly somewhere where it's already being taken care of by another agency. Or, uh, and we're not talking about a new facility here, hey, they have to get on board, get these things done, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, i- i- if it's not relevant, because I feel like you start targeting and singling out businesses, right? You know, you got small business over here, take Maria's Taco Shop over at the Shell Station. When's the last time you guys inspected them compared to, you know, a liquor license establishment or a, um, marijuana establishment or a brothel? So you start, it starts becoming selective enforcement. That's what I'm trying to highlight here, okay, guys? So keep it simple. You guys are complaint-driven. You know, if you're asking me for another person, if you're asking at least this one commissioner, "Hey, Commissioner, I need another person to do these things," then, then I'm, I'm listening. If you're asking me, "I need a person to do all these other things," and I'm telling you that, I'm trying to alleviate responsibility from your plate. Hey, those things are just not a priority. I think this board's pretty, been pretty clear in the past in what we're saying without saying that. That's at least what I see there, so.
In order to relieve, in order to relieve them from doing certain things, we need to change certain bills. So, I mean, frankly, uh, I think everything we've written, uh, says that they have to go do something.
Mark wants to speak, I think, yeah?
Mark Gankarz, G-A-N-C-A-R-Z, Code Enforcement Officer. Um, some of the other things that are, um, that were on Amanda's plate, she has been a planner now for two months, um, and we have a new code enforcement officer. Uh, dust control, dust control issues were called in daily, especially when it's windy, and we understand we're in a desert, we get it. But we still have to take care of those calls, or she did, which were multiple. Um, included with that was trackout calls at construction sites, all the trackout by the vehicles. It gets out in the roads, it's dusty, it's getting on other people's properties. She had so many calls on that. And again, this is part of the dust control issue. So cases had to be opened up on that. Phone calls had to be made, letters had to be sent, um, especially on trackout dust issues, especially with all the construction going on. Um, I believe the marijuana and the, um, jails were all quarterly reports that needed to be done. Um, we had to go there quarterly and do reports with the fire department. They were there also, along with, at the time, Mr. Koenig was there. We would go through the jails, and if there were issues on, that went through our department, we had to take care of those. Fire department was there, the sheriff's department was there, and those went to their departments.
Buildings and grounds now, too.
I'm sorry?
When it was building and grounds now, too.
Absolutely, somebody was from buildings and grounds. So what's happened is, is it's like an administrative part of the job takes so much time away from one compliance officer or both. Amanda was doing the marijuana, um, quarterly inspections, I was doing the jails, and it just takes a lot of your time away. And then the dust control, air quality, uh, it, it all adds up to a lot of time taken away. And now with our complaints that have exploded lately, because property values have gotten out of control, um, we're getting complaints after complaints about other properties, and it takes away from those other administrative issues or vice versa. Those administrative issues take away from our time to be completing our stuff in a proper, timely manner. And I think that's where this has gone for this third position. It's more administrative, but it takes a lot of the time away from our stuff that needs to be done.
So why has it gotta be, why does it have to be a senior?
I, I can't hear you.
Why has it gotta be a senior position?
That I don't know. I, I don't know the ins and outs of the senior compared to another position. I, I don't know that.
Looking at your assistant director.
Mr. Osborne, please.
I'm, I'm not really sure the answer to, to that exactly, but, uh, I think it was just that that position could also then help supervise, um, the two code compliance officers as well, but...
Don't you already, I'm confused. I thought we already had somebody that was the senior level already.
No, it's two, two code compliance officers of the same level positions.
You're bringing a new person in to be the senior over, I'm confused.
Sounds like...
Chair, I think I can answer that question. I think what the idea is, is to create the position and allow for internal and external applicants, and then hire someone into that position, and if it's an internal promotion, then fill the vacancy.
I would presume that to be correct, but I was hoping to get that answer from somebody else. Thank you.
And again, and again, I'm not sure how that all works, so.
I got you on that.
Okay.
That's, that would be his call, since he's the one in charge right now. Okay. All right, um, Commissioner Jabor, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Steve and Mark, thank you for coming forward and, and pleading your case. I mean, we heard, we heard Commissioner Blundo, uh, in, in the very beginning, and, and I don't totally disagree. And it's not to take anything away from, from Mark and Amanda or now the new, the newest, uh, uh, code enforcement person on board. I know that you are very busy and you're out in the field, your boots on the ground, and you're trying to take care of as much as possible. I heard Steve say there were 300 cases, 300 cases a month. These are 300 cases pending. I know a few months ago, we got a list from the director, uh, with pending cases, and it wasn't even close to 300. So I, I didn't understand that, that portion of your presentation. I know that, uh, other departments came before us with the budget and pleading with us. You can address it after I'm finished, please. They came before us and pleading with us that they were in desperate need of, of positions, and we did the best that we could, truly the best that we could, to figure things out. And I understand, and, and Savannah did a great job putting this together and trying to manipulate the numbers. Um, but again, it's coming, the majority is coming out of the general fund. And I, I just need to help understand, and I understand, uh, the director Wagner's frustration, uh, where he came back and said that we only wanted to talk about shirts and badges, et cetera, and that's not what we only wanted to talk about, uh, because this is very important. We're not trying to burn anybody out, but we do have to prioritize across the board with all of the positions, not just this position. So go ahead, please, Assistant Director.
Yes, as far as the number of code enforcement cases, in 2019, there were 260 total code enforcement cases that were received, complaints that were received and then processed. 2020, it was 313 cases, and in 2021, 342 cases. So complaints that were received, properties inspected and processed, so. And that's my understanding, it's around 300 total cases. Uh, so that would, that would be, I believe, um, so currently, there's, there's, each code compliance officer has 130 to 150 cases that they're handling currently.
So, so, so may I, Steve, wh- when you mentioned there were, so there's an average of 300 a year annually, that's per code enforcement agent?
No, that's, that's total.
That's total, so, so that's twenty-five, approximately twenty-five, uh, complaints or issues per month, and so that's, uh, one, one and a half a day of, of properties they, or businesses, or people that they would have to go and make contact with. Would you agree to that?
Well, I mean, each, each case, there's multiple, multiple actions that have to be taken, there's number, um, several letters that have to be done per case typically, um, you wanna?
Yeah.
I think Mark can describe that a lot more.
Yes, each, each case is different, where some cases, one letter goes out and they come into compliance, there's no issue. Other cases go multiple levels, multiple letters, then it goes to citation, and then we have to do a report of investigation on that, if it's gonna go beyond that, to the District Attorney's Office and submit that. Then we have days in court, which some days were there two to three hours, some days were there eight hours. It all depends on the case and what's being discussed. So some of these cases do go away, yes, I will admit that, but for the most part, um, people don't want to comply, we have to go the full gamut, which goes up to six months of having that case open, and we have to do our part every thirty to forty days, um, for our letters to go out and reassess the property. Some things get taken care of, some things don't. And again, then you get into the court part of it, where we're taking time out of our day to go to court, and sometimes it's a short time, sometimes it's a long time. Sometimes we sit there at the courthouse and then it gets put off to another day. So again, we've wasted six to eight hours of one of those days waiting for that. So there's other issues showing the longevity of some of these cases and the longevity of these cases and the process of it. Simple cases are great, yes, people comply, it's done in thirty days, but for the most part, we don't see that. So these cases just don't go away in that twenty-five days of a case coming to our desk. And some of them expand, they start doing different things and we add codes to them. So, eh, there, there's a lot of other things. Also, some of these cases require processes. Commercial properties require site development, and we have to wait and adjust our timetables to that. So, these cases aren't just an in and out thing where we go on to the next one. The, it's a, it's a continuation a lot of that time, so.
Yeah, so, so I appreciate that, I appreciate that explanation, Mark, because there, there is the overlap where, where you respond, you take the complaint, you respond, you make contact, you send out a letter, you find out who the owner is, you send out a second letter, et cetera, um, and then there is court time, I get it, but please, uh, I think you may, may have misunderstood my math, was taking the three hundred cases per year divided by twelve months, it's twenty-five cases. So I'm saying that's one, one and a half per day-ish, one and a half, and then they overlap, and I get it, this has to be factored in, it's not just the number. But there's two of you that are dealing with this, and that's why I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the justification for a third person to, as it was mentioned, would it, it would be mostly administrative?
Yes, and I understand wh- where you're coming from, by putting it out on a case per day in a month's time. In that time also, we are taking care of dust control, these, um, inspections, we also have time at the counter, people asking questions, phone calls every day, it's ten to fifteen different phone calls taking our time. So the, the time in the case, what you're looking at per day is not just on that case. We are doing many other things during the day to justify that. Wh- where we've got travel time, some of these places that I go to out in the desert, eh, eh, you know, it takes a long time to get to these places, you have to get out, take photos, it, 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 it's a time justification thing here, and that's what's happened now with all the dust control issues, the, the, um, the inspections and all the other things administrative wise that is taking that time away from us to be out in the field to take care of these cases. And that includes going to court and getting documentation for citations, um, doing things with the sheriff's department, we'll get called out to go look at a property from the sheriff's department. So there is a lot of other stuff involved in that that would take a big burden off of both of us if we had more of an administrative position to help out with the other stuff. So, that's why we're here.
The only concern I have is, is, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Jabor, the issue, because you made that comment administrative, this is not an administrative position, that's the reason why I'm kinda concerned.
Okay, my apologies on the wording of it, but the...
Just use the word position.
Position, okay.
Be happy.
Thank you.
Because obviously, there's, there's more to this than meets the eye. Go ahead, Commissioner Jabor.
Th- th- thank you. So, so Steve and Mark, if, if you don't mind, um, would you be able to tell us, uh, per the citations, what, what's generated annually from the citations? Or are they just a sticker that's put on the door?
The, the citation process has just started with us, where we have to get all of our information, submit it to a deputy, to the, uh, sheriff's department, and they fill out the citations and send them out accordingly. And then that documentation, along with other information that we have to provide, goes to the District Attorney's Office for prosecution.
So, so is there any projected revenue anticipated from these citations?
I do not have that information, maybe Brett would, and I, I don't know if you do. Y- yeah, I, I don't know that information, sorry.
Let's collect the door in court, if it's in court.
From my understanding, the citations go to court when we do go to court on these, and then the judge would have them pay the fines and then go over the violations of the property.
And the court will receive some of that money and, and again, it has to get divided up, so. It's, it's a small amount, but yep. And that, that's an aggregate or something else. So, Commissioner Jabor, you have some more?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm finished for now.
Commissioner Strickland, are you still good?
I am, sir.
Commissioner Cox, you still good?
I'm still here, but I'm not good, I have questions.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, you wanna let, um, does Deborah wanna go first?
No, Deborah says she's. She's okay. So go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
So, um, I have a couple of questions from both Steve and Mark, if they're still there. I can't see them on my computer, so I can't tell.
They're both here.
Is Brent there, is Brent there anywhere?
They're both here.
No, Brent, is Brett there anywhere?
No, Brent, Brent is on a boat somewhere.
Oh, that's right, freezing to death in Alaska.
Do you have him on the phone?
Um, so, um, uh, Steve, are you running things over there from a administrative point of view at this point? What's your position?
He's the assistant, assistant director.
Right, Assistant Planning Director.
Okay, well, uh, most of my questions are more towards Brett, but it's all right, I'll see if you can answer them. Um, I was just in there yesterday, in fact, I was speaking with Mark, and I've noticed that you've hired a lot of new administrative people. Can you tell us exactly how many you've, you've hired over the last several months?
We've, we've, uh, filled positions that were vacant that, when people left. We have a couple of new people, but, um, they filled, uh, vacant positions.
There's, there's, there's cards there that, um, have increased, I mean, you used to have like four people, now you have like fourteen, um, and places that I didn't recognize, and, um, and they are, I assume they're all administration, of course, you're pretty much in all administration office, um, with the exception of, um, Mark and, um, Amanda. So, I have some concerns about overhiring or hiring too many people, um, because we did that once before when things looked good and everything was going, happening good, and then we ended up that the bottom fell out of things, and I'm talking about back in two thousand and eight, and I'm sure you were there at that time, and then we had, we had, we've got, all of a sudden, we had twenty-two people working in your department, and then the bottom fell out and we had to lay all those people off, and him, had to buy him out, and we had to pay, I, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was here, and they were paying them, um, retiring them out. So I don't want to get in a position where we overhire, and I do feel, you know, with Mark, I feel, I, for him, I understand, I'm a guy, I'm, I'm so far behind, I've got paperwork all over, and I understand it's really hard to get through a day and get everything done that you're trying to do, especially if you have to be getting in your automobile, but at the same time, I don't understand why maybe Mark isn't being promoted up to this position you're asking for, and then another person hired maybe on a temporary basis to get us through a tough time, because I understand the bottom's gonna fall out again, and we have, everything's gonna go haywire.
Commissioner Cox?
Because, uh-huh.
Commissioner Cox, uh, unfortunately, that's probably, I don't want to say who's gonna get hired into that position, but that's, the whole idea is, you know, to, to hire, to, to get the position and be able to move somebody up and, and move another person in the lower position. So just, just so you know that that's kind of the, the stepping stone here.
Well, I just hate to see, um, I hate to see a third person come in when we have all of that, all these administrators been, you know, the, the ones that do, the secretary will work basically and put things together, which shouldn't be Mark's job and it shouldn't be Amanda's job. They should be out inspecting and they should have somebody putting it together for them when they get in. And so, I mean, that's just my take on how I would run an office like that, but it makes, to me, that makes sense, that we should not be overloading the two we have, but in the same, um, regards, we don't need somebody that is a chief, uh, chief compliance officer when we have two good officers as it is, we need somebody in admin, in administration to help those people out, and just like Mark said, that's what he said, and I don't think senior compliance, co-compliance officer is a good name for it, I, I agree with you, Frank, I agree with everything you said, and I agree with a whole lot of what, um, Leo said. He hit a lot of things on the head there, and maybe what we need to do is we need to eliminate some of our conditions. Maybe we're overloading them by writing up too many laws, but I know that they keep getting brought to us by the heads of those departments over there because they want more things to have more compliance with, that then costs us more money, are we breaking even? I doubt it, um, because we have to pay heavy retirement to these people every time we hire one of them. So, I, 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 due to the fact that they have a lot of new people already, I just don't think putting somebody else in there is justified. Um, I, I did ask a question about how many staff you have administratively, how many people work in that office? And that was a question to Steve, how many people work in that office?
The total number of positions?
The ones in planning and everything. Planning and zoning, and then admin, inspections, everything, give me a total of people that are working for the county and, under your planning and zoning department.
Uh, ten, ten, ten's the total.
Okay, okay, because I saw what added up to about fourteen cards when I, when I was over there, you know, they're in the displaying, sitting out front, public can see them, type of situation. I didn't get to go through them, there may have been a double stack for somebody, but, and how many of those people have been hired just lately?
Commissioner, let's stay, stay on, stay on the, the one, one position we're trying to hire.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to show that maybe we don't need to hire anymore because we've already hired enough. You know?
So, I mean, that, that.
So, my point is, I, I just, I just, this is just not a good time to be spending more money, we just put out a ton of money for gas and et cetera, you know, new vehicle for somebody in the last item we had, or maybe something else, but there, we could shovel this around, we can give marijuana inspection to the sheriff's department, why do we have to do them? Give them to the sheriff's department. EPA handles air quality, why are we doing that? There's other place, they, they just.
I agree wholeheartedly.
You know, um, business license, we have somebody in the town, down in our admin office that can help take care of all that. We need to keep the ones working that we have working already, we don't need them going home early 'cause they ran out of work.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and then, let's get, let's get this thing on the, on the road. We've had a myriad of, now, almost an hour and ten minutes of discussion for this. So.
You know, it's important.
Chair, I, I recognize, uh, adverse or negative motions, um, they don't, they don't necessarily work, so I would just ask the board not to make a motion and just let this item die for, for lack of action.
I gotta, I gotta ask for the process anyway, public comment, anybody? Thank you. Have a, on the phone?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, this is Timbo Henen, B O H A, and, oh, a lot of discussion, what I've heard is there's backlog and there's backlog possibly because there's all-in and recordings in and potentially selective enforcement. And, you know, A, from a budget standpoint, do you know what your budget is for your department? I'm sure you do, but then you do know, do you know what the cash position is for that budget, for that department? I don't think so. So I would be a little bit concerned about adding to it before we have A consistency on, on the financial side, on the treasures office and getting fund balances, but also, um, it sounds like there's still bandwidth available to use and take advantage of, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahan, anybody else on the phone?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, this is Mary Fisher, F I S H E R. Uh, the que- one comment I'd like to make is the, um, regarding the dust permits and the dig permits, um, the code compliance issues that, uh, your office deals with, I don't know, um, Mark and Amanda, but, um, when, when it becomes an, an issue, I would assume that the more senior people in the department would address, um, those, um, locations and, um, in- investigate them. However, um, as far as, um, uh, hiring a new person to basically go out and take photographs and return them to the office, I think you're better off, if you need to hire someone, um, maybe on a part-time basis, when you have a list of, uh, things to do, to go out and, um, take photographs, and that person could be working at McDonald's. You don't need, um, these kids nowadays can work their cell phones pretty good, taking pictures, and basically, this is what a lot of agencies do when there is a major, uh, amount of work to be done, and, um, the planners and the estimators and everybody cannot get out to the field, and so what we have is a list of, um, uh, people that we can rely on to, uh, to, Mike, whom in this case, Nyack County's so large, have a group up in Nyack, uh, Tonapa and a group down here in Perump, and send these kids out to, uh, take photographs and give. and give them, you know, 20 hours of work or something like that. But, um, like Mrs. Cox said, this is not at the time to be hiring, um, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Appreciate it. Alrighty. Anybody else on the phone?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you.
Caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Sherry Stringer, Nye County Assessor, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R. Um, you know, not, not taking anything away from the planning department, but on May 26th, we had a budget meeting, and, um, quite a few of us all had our budgets taken off of the agenda. And we had $750,000 to spend. That's what the county could afford to fill. And they filled what they thought were critical positions, and I get that. But it was also asked of all of the county to, or all of the departments and department heads, to wait until after the first of the tax year, which is July 1st, which is, what, another week? To see what type of income could be realized after that. And then we were asked to bring our, our positions back again at that time. So I, I'm going to just say I think that that's what we should do. Uh, wait until our, uh, our income is realized and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone?
No further comment on the phone, Chair.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a comment on what Ms. Cox said about how many people were there. We had two people recently retire, and those positions were just replaced. And one of those positions, um, as for a planner, moved up to a different planning level. And then one of the code enforcement officers moved to be a planner and was replaced also. And it's just a replacement of positions. None have been added.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you. So I, I've got, uh, public comments closed. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, what do we want to do here?
I got nothing to say except for what Sherry Stringer said. Thank you, Tim.
I don't, and, and, and I, I hear where Ms. Stringer was going with that, but that'll be the third time. And quite frankly, how many more times does it need to come? So it's kind of frustrating. So I don't have anything further to say.
Ms. Cox?
No, I, I guess we all covered it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeBoer?
I have nothing further at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I do want to make a comment. We did say bring this back in July, and I'm just kind of confused on how it got. You know, I was gonna sit down and talk about this with the county manager, but I figured we'd just have it on here and just talk it. So, I mean, we did say July when we had, when we had the budget meeting, so. So I have no, right now I have no motion, so, um, we're just going to move forward. I am going to go after 21. I'm going to go hit 22, which is general public comment. Held up the three-minute period, time limit per person. No actions will be taken on this matter, considered during this period of time until specifically included on an agenda, item, action item. So is there any general public comment? Phone?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, good afternoon. It's Timbo Henon, BOHA, and Owen. I'd like to, I'd like for our treasury office and our commissioners to keep a tight eye on the fund balances, uh, for each of the, each of the, um, appropriate accounts to make sure that we don't have any deficiencies. Uh, we haven't seen a fund balance report recently because of the cleanup that was going on in the treasurer's office, but we need to be wary of that and also wary for any new adds of positions and things of that nature until we have a very good handle on the fund balances. And I know the budget process was pretty solid, but, uh, inflation's happening, so we need to keep a tight control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahan. Appreciate it. Anybody else on the phone?
No, Chair.
I am going to close general public comment. I'm going to open item number 23, which is commissioner management comments. This is, this is for, this is limited to announcements and topics and issues proposed for future agendas or actions. Any, I'm going to go with Commissioner DeBoer first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this, uh, this Friday, Saturday, Sunday in Duckwater, uh, Duckwater will be, the Shoshone tribe of Duckwater will be holding their, their powwow that they, that they did not have and canceled the last couple of years due to COVID. And so that's, uh, up to Tonopah, turn, turn east and right on Route 6. And it'll take you right out to, uh, Duckwater. They just have to make a left at the sign. So they, um, they have, uh, some festivities, and they would love to see, uh, most of Nye County come and participate. Also this weekend in Tonopah, VFW has, has a special ceremony starting at 10:00 AM. Again, it's this Saturday. Uh, there will be a proper retirement of flags. So if you have some flags that need to be retired, uh, they will do that properly, uh, with the ceremony. Also, the commander, the colonel of Nellis Air Force Base, uh, will be present to make a, uh, flag presentation, uh, to the town of Tonopah and also to the VFW. Uh, later on that night, there will be, um, of course, there will be barbecue, music, food, entertainment. Uh, but they're also having and sponsoring a red, white, and booze festivities with, with band, et cetera, um, that will be here in Tonopah. So it'll be an active weekend up here. And again, I know that Marla, uh, is on the phone, so as a reminder to everybody, protect your children, conserve your water, and spay and neuter your pets. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
No, I don't have anything right now.
Mr. Strickland?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Blondo?
I have, uh, have a few items here. And so seeing how the vote went, I, uh, I'd like to have an item come before the board. Are we going to be doing, what is it, to have a third-party handler for self-insurance? Will we have an item to go out and solicit?
I can respond to that. So the board gave direction for us to pursue, um, self-insurance several months ago, which we did, given the board's vote today, that we were planning just to move forward with, with what was presented today.
Okay.
I mean, not the pool side, obviously, the, the third party, but.
So who's doing our third party then?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to do the third party?
Uh, there are multiple different carriers. Um, Lorena, did you want to weigh in on that? I think Liberty was the main one.
Yes, they were. We were still waiting for a couple other options, but the third party is, at this point, it's not, um, there's no financial impact, so we were just going to move forward with that administratively.
Would that be like a request for qualifications to go out there?
No, it, it's what is available that, there's a list that LP can provide to us that, that they contract with.
And if we choose not to use those people?
We could solicit, but this, this policy will go into effect July 1. I don't think we have time to solicit.
All right, we'll talk offline. Get a few, a little bit more detail then. I'll give you a ring on that one, Lorena.
Okay, thank you.
County manager? Yeah, there was a report that Commissioner DeBoer was asking, and I think everybody would like to see one way or the other. Could we get that? What's it, can I get a timeline from you on that? Because I, 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 I hear you. There's got to be some information redacted that you're not privileged to. I was not aware of that. That was discovered today. Okay, great, fine. So, um, I just would like a timeline on that.
Um, we'll have to look at it. LP has been working on providing that type of report. And even once that is provided, we'll have to look at how it's made up. So I mean, I'll, I could say probably like a month.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's, there's some things we want to do with this information, as you well know. I need to make a presentation to a specific organization. Okay, so I just, we just need to figure out what the timeline really is on that. So we'll work together on that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to ask comptroller, ARPA policy. I know budget, this, that. We got lost with a lot of different things. But now that every crisis is, uh, we've averted, and we're still in good health, when is that coming to the board?
So, uh, it's interesting that you ask. I just spoke with our external auditor yesterday with regards to the single audit. Uh, we had a few concerns we were looking into that would potentially adjust how that policy was written. But, uh, we resolved those concerns, and we have language that we think will, uh, help us move forward more effectively.
Can we send out a draft when we're ready?
You, uh, I don't, I don't, a draft to the commissioners?
Yeah, we already have a plan that we've already voted.
We have a plan, yes. We just need, this is just the legal verbiage in the policy that we're working on right now.
Is it more left or right? Meaning, is it more, is it more that we can do more things without a lot of paperwork, or is it more paperwork?
Um, well, the concerns were not necessarily related to paperwork. It was making sure, um, we were managing, managing the process as effectively as possible.
I, I, I'm personally curious and interested. I'd like to see that when, when we have an idea what that starts looking like.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Um, obviously, we heard today under another item, talking about responsibilities. And obviously, that department feels that they don't have the ability to just focus on the things that are important. County manager, what specific item would need to come to alleviate that department of those responsibilities or to justify, uh, to rectify those timelines or whatever it needs?
I'm not sure what department you're speaking about.
The planning department says code compliance has to do X, Y, and Z. We need to have that conversation, so I'd like to have that come forward. It was said, it needs to be policy change. What policy?
What the commi, what the commissioner is saying is what, what ordinances do we have out there today that would change that complexion of what they do?
Okay, to make the process more streamlined?
Correct.
Well, sure.
That'd be correct. At least that's what I'm understanding.
Specifically because they said they got to take care of the town of Perump business licensing, which I don't think they, they should. It's a different subset, right? They do the review for the zoning and all that stuff, that I understand. Uh, they were make, doing code compliance checks for the fire department, which I think is outside of their wheelhouse. They may attend things with the fire department, but not with, not, not doing it for them. The brothels and the marijuana, so at least those two are pretty specific on the code.
There's some, we can talk more about that.
It sounds like you want a wholesale item that just addresses the purview of code compliance and maybe make some changes on that.
Yeah, well, I think if we set a policy, that'll, that'll maybe make it easier for them. And, um, I, I really, I, I want to bring this up here now because I had mentioned it on Thursday, but I know you had to take care of the kids, the women, no, the girls, so over, they were at Mount Charleston, yeah? So I wanted to bring it up here. During the election cycle, uh, we had that email that you sent out. And I believed, I personally believed, and I'm going to preface it this way. I'm personally concerned that all the candidates that I emailed, you emailed, that nobody else woke up and understood or read the, read the code. So I felt that it was a overstep of authority, and how do we rectify the overstepping of authority? So, um, I'd like to look into an item to be able to, if I remember correctly, that you have to do it in a public meeting. You have to be noticed. Can you look up the process for that and get that to me so we can do that? We're, we got to give the benefit of the doubt. I do believe you went outside of your authority on that by sending that email, and, uh, we need to do the process, so.
So how do you, uh, figure I went outside my authority?
You should have never sent that email to begin with. So.
Based on what?
Okay, hold on a second.
That's discussing the item right here and now.
I'm not, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to discuss it here.
But I'm directing county manager to.
Chair, can we go into closed session, um, on a different date for that, please?
It's not a closed session item.
Well, we'll, we'll figure out how we handle that, but not, not here, not on this management comment. It's not the place.
It's an item I'm requesting.
I know, but the discussion was not.
Excuse me. I think we have some guidelines that has to how that is supposed to be handled. Um, because we've done it, well, we didn't do it, but in the past, it, it, it's the same thing they did with Shirley Madsen when they had issues with her and her department. And it was brought in from the county commissioners. So there are some guidelines there you have to follow.
Correct, so.
If that's what you mean, yeah.
Correct.
Objectively speaking, guys, just, just bear with me just for a moment. I, I understand this item may be about Tim, okay? It's got, you guys got to remove that. He's also the county manager. I'm asking county manager to, to look into it. Get me the information so we can have that conversation.
And that's all I need to hear.
That's it. That's all it is. We're not trying to have the discussion here.
Correct. All right, anything else? I do want to say that, uh, the elections were, were tough. We have a person that's, is a bitter half, is actually running in a position, Ms. Knightley. So we want to thank you for that position. I'm glad that we have one of our own actually there, so thank you. Other than that, um, I don't think I've, I think I've hit everybody up for, for management comment. Um, don't need any public comment. Anybody? Going, going once. We're adjourned.
Thank you.